It's a little after, well, I have 6:02. Town council chambers, we'll have roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Sheila is at her Town and City Clerk conference tonight, so I'll be doing the roll call. Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Here.
Mayor Crissati.
Here.
Despard.
Here.
Finger.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ludwig.
Here.
Mangini. I believe that Council Mangini will be arriving late. Okay. Nelson.
Upstairs.
Okay. Pizner.
Here.
Santinella.
Here.
And Ungeyer. We have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and take a moment, and I will be introducing Scott Copan, the former mayor here in town, who has agreed to moderate tonight's discussion so that we on the council dius may concentrate on the presentations that will come before us tonight. As many of you know, he also cheers the Fourth of July celebration, and if he can successfully wrangle all of his volunteers, vendors, musicians, and guests over that weekend, well, we have full confidence in your ability to manage tonight's proceedings. So, thank you, Scott, for that. We're very appreciative that you have agreed to be here tonight and help the town come to the conclusion of almost this two-year issue that we've been having. As you can see by the agenda, the assessor and the colleagues will begin with a presentation, followed by the presentation of the Board of Appeals, and then the third portion of the evening is going to be featuring cases from the 2021 revaluation. At this time, it's my pleasure to turn the meeting over to Mr. Scott Copan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Crissati and Town Council members. It is good to be back. And driving in from work, it was a very familiar two-mile drive here. One thing has changed in about the six years. I now need glasses to read. So, I just, I want to go over quickly the role of a moderator, just so that we level set for everyone that's here. You know, the role of the moderator is to keep time, keep the peace, and keep the evening moving. If we look at the time allotments on the agenda, we have at a minimum a four-hour meeting in front of us. I do want to caution the audience that comments made from the audience will be considered disruptive, and the person engaging in the disruptive behavior will be asked to leave. And unfortunately, that's my discretion, so please don't put me in that position. This is a special meeting of the Town Council. The presentations are to the Town Council. It's not a Q&amp;A session. It's not questions to the audience, staff, or council members. My role is an impartial moderator, and my goal is to run a fair meeting based on what the various parties have agreed to for this evening. Please caution those presenting, so to our presenters, there are strict adherence to the time limits. It's an hour and 15-minute presentation, and then when we get to the cases, there are 10-minute cases with a five-minute response. I'll also be the keeper of the time. I will do my best to politely interrupt you when there's 15 minutes remaining on the presentation, and then at 2 minutes and 1 minute for the case presentations and case responses, just so that you know it's time to wrap up. With that, we'll go right into the heart of the meeting, and we'll begin with the first presentation by Assessor Todd Helms. It's one hour and 15 minutes with special guests. Todd?
Thank you, Scott. Is that working?
Yep.
Thank you, Town Council, for allowing me this time to finally come up in that and actually speak about these issues.
So, thanks, thank you, everybody, for allowing me this time to actually come out and speak about all the allegations that have been happening, everything that's happened since the 21 revaluation. I have a couple of colleagues with me on the side, Tom Denault and Donna Murphy, to help me answer any questions or just to interject some instances of, you know, towns that they worked in and, you know, the actual process that they follow. I only have 75 minutes, so I'm just going to basically jump right into this. So, I want to start off with basically what does the assessor actually do? We're basically going to get into the assessor's role and some clarifications on some certain BAA statements and allegations that are made in the last 18 months. The basic role of an assessor is to discover, list, and value. Those are the three basic things. It's pretty easy. And then we'll get into some rebuttals. So, what is the assessor's role? Part one, discover. We're supposed to go out there and discover all the property that's in the town of Enfield, whether that's real estate, personal property, or motor vehicle. Doesn't matter if it's taxable, exempt, we're just supposed to list, discover everything that's out there for the town. The second thing is actually listing all of that property. Once we have all that, we make a list of all of it. Again, we have help with digital software, Vision Database for the real estate, the personal property. We use QDS, or Quality Data Solutions, which is a vendor of ours. We use them for the personal property module. That keeps track of all the businesses. And the motor vehicle, we get a list from the Connecticut DMV twice a year, and again, QDS helps us with that as far as keeping track of all that. Well, this, no, that's all right. I mean, can you see it on the screen? I mean, this was the last, I've only had about a week and a half to put all this together, and my staff was working until 5 o'clock, so, okay. I apologize for that. I mean, there might be, I mean, I have it in here, so, there's another one? Okay. No, no problem. The third part, you know, is the valuation, and that's what everybody talks about. We're supposed to put a fair market value on all real, all property. Enfield has almost 16,000 resident, 16,000 real estate parcels, a little over 2,000 personal property accounts, and motor vehicles are close to 40,000. Now, I call them an assessor, this is my own term, you know, we're just glorified accountants. We don't actually value anything. We don't set the value. The real estate is set by the market. You know, we take everything that's sold, businesses, that type of thing, and we compile lists and, you know, make sure that everybody's the same value. Personal property, they're self-reported by the businesses. You know, we don't set their values. We do perform a few audits every single year where we hire an outside vendor to go in to actually, you know, take a list of all their equipment, but for the most part, personal property businesses, they're self-reporting. And for the motor vehicle, I know there's been a lot of consternation about, you know, the prices going on, but that's set by the market as well. And even though the DMV doesn't price it, they use the same software that we do, the same pricing guide, the JD Power. There's over 3 million cars in the state of Connecticut. 90%, 95%, a huge percent of those are run through from the DMV pricing all the vehicles. So, when we get that list from the motor vehicle, from the DMV, they already have a price on them. Not that the DMV priced them, but they ran it through that software, the same software that we use, to put a price on the motor vehicles. So, now we'll get into some of the crux of the issues, the PA 490 farms, open space. So, when I first got hired in Enfield, it was described to me that they wanted to clean up the town. There was, there was a lot of disorganized records, files, that type of thing. When I came into the town, there was a revaluation going on. It was already 2/3 of the way through. I came in at the very tail end of it. Part of a revaluation that I've always done is always a review of the PA 490 properties. That's the perfect time to do it, when there's a revaluation, because every property is getting looked at. So, I try not to single out any one classification of properties. When the whole town's getting done, perfect time to look at everybody else. It took me over a month just to compile all the paperwork and put it into some semblance of order where I knew this application went to this property, and it literally took me over a month just to do that. When that was all said and done, I had about 77 properties that needed more information. There's a handout. I don't know if you guys have that or not, but those are the 77 properties. That's in the back. Just things that I need more clarification, need to do more research on. 10 of those properties were under open space. Now, as we've all discovered, Enfield never had open space. The ordinance was never passed. I, I will get into that a little bit further along and more explanation. There was 11 properties that didn't have an updated application, meaning that there was a sale, there was a transfer, you know, Aunt Joan gave it to a cousin, whoever, you know, they just needed to have an updated application. And I'll get into more about the sales and transfers and what transpires on those. 13 properties literally had no application whatsoever. Four properties, I had a discussion with the owners, met them on their properties, or, you know, a couple of them were on the phone, and they explained to me, we don't farm, we used to, but we don't do it anymore. So, those were easy enough. They agreed, you know, take us off PA 490. One application I actually denied, wasn't actually me, but the, my assistant assessor told the person, you know, he dropped off the application. She told him there was a couple missing fields. You need to have these filled out. These are required. He came back and filled out one of the fields, but then he filled out the other one. We asked again, you know, hey, you're still missing some information on this. Please fill it out correctly. We never got back a completed application, so I'll get into further about denying an application. 24 properties were actually from a change of use. You know, they were, used to be farming, it's a commercial property now, there's trees growing up in the farm, in the fields, whatever the case may be, and I'll go over a few of those. I gotta look at my notes, because Ken's, I mean, Mike's head is in my way. No, you're fine. No, you're fine. And 14 properties, you know, I reviewed, and those are in the dark green on the spreadsheet that I at first had questions for, but then after reviewing it, reviewing the statutes, talking to some of the owners, it was determined that, you know, those just remained in PA 490. They were never removed. They retained their status from the start. So, some of these properties, so this one here, there are six properties that either had a commercial business. This one in particular had an application for an orchard, and I know it's difficult to see in the picture, but they're such long properties that, you know, you can't really blow them up and see the whole thing, but it's really one of those little slivers right in the center. If you see the big dirt spot that's in the center, the property to the right of that is the one we're talking about. That's part of Bill's landscaping. It is literally, I mean, the original application was for an orchard, but it's literally being used as his, you know, landscape yard, parking, storage, whatever it is. So, properties, this is just one example of, you know, some of the properties that I removed because of a commercial use. There was four properties.
This was skipped in this handout.
Well, these came right from the printing press. Four properties were either a personal horse or a hobby farm. Statutes and the guidelines strictly say, you know, you can't, you're not qualified for PA 490 if you just have your own personal horse. Has to be a business-related activity. There's supposed to be at least some type of income or some, some type of benefit, you know, in, to be qualified for a PA 490. I talked to just about every one of these people, I believe, and they all told me, you know, it's their own horse. It's their own pleasure riding horse, you know, they're not boarding anybody, they're not offering riding lessons. So, these four properties were removed. Three properties were at one point a Christmas tree farm. The one right in the middle, you can see, is this thing, yeah? You know, this area right here, it looks like it used to be a Christmas tree area where they were growing Christmas trees. Long been abandoned, they're not in business anymore, hadn't sold trees in years. So, you know, we removed these three properties. 11 properties were that last one, you know, there was just no farming activity. You know, overgrown fields, pricker bushes, elm trees, you know, poplars growing up. It was obvious that the properties hadn't been farmed in years. It wasn't just laying fallow for two or three years or whatever. It was obvious. I have a background in agriculture and stuff and everything, so, I mean, it was obvious that these things have been laying fallow for a long time. Nobody was actively farming on these for quite a while. So, those 11 properties were removed. Getting into some of the statutes and regulations for PA 490, I know we've all heard from Joan Nichols, State Representative Doug Dobitzky spoke at one of the meetings. The Ag Commission had a meeting at the Annex in March of '22 where Doug spoke, Joan spoke, and then we'll get into some classifications of the tillable pasture orchard. That's what we mean. I'll be talking about classifications on PA 490. That's what it means, whether it's tillable property, it's a pasture, it's an orchard, it's wetlands, it's whatever it might be. So, unlike many statutes that are just written in the books, PA 490 actually includes a declaration of policy. We'll call it the PA 490 Guide. This is kind of critical in actually determining, it's a guideline for assessors and everybody to use in determining whether something qualifies under PA 490. Can't strictly go by the statute. You really have to look into the guidelines to see what they're recommending. Some of the things, like on page 11, and this is in the handouts in the back as well, some of the things an assessor has to consider for farmland classification is the acreage, the portion of land and productivity, the gross income of the property, the equipment used. You know, if it's a commercial entity, unless the land's being leased, which is the next one, you know, somebody has to have some type of equipment to maintain that farm. On page 12 is the leased land. You know, you don't have to be a farmer. You can be leasing your 12-acre field to a farmer that's paying it for you. You're getting a benefit. The income on that part is not necessarily monitair, monitair, you know, not money, basically just the maintenance of the property. So, you do get a benefit from it. So, those do qualify. The horse operations, I put this in there because of the ones that I removed on page 12. If the landowner has a horse for pleasure and not for some business-related activity, the land use may not be valued as farmland. That's right in the guideline, taken as a quote. Pretty straightforward. Also, on page 32, in the question and answer section of the book, somebody asked a question, and the answer was, "New-deed landowners are required to notify the assessor of a change of ownership and must complete the appropriate applications." So, if you have a new deed, I mean, you're required to file a new or an updated application with the assessor. There's no doubts about that. It's been adjudicated. You know, that's something that has to be done. And also, I talked about the one that I denied. This is from page nine in the guidebook. Applications that are not filed within the prescribed timeframe or are incomplete will not be accepted. So, it describes in there what is required on that form. This is a state form. It's not something the assessors make up. We all use the state, the form, you know, across the whole state, and if those fields aren't, you know, filled in, you have to deny it. So, some of the reasons why you can, an assessor can take property out of PA 490, there's two reasons. The first one is if it's a sale or a transfer. Now, every sale or transfer, regardless of the parties involved, must file an application with the assessor. My other example before, if an uncle's selling it to a cousin, you know, it doesn't matter if it's a family member, if it's a spouse giving it to a spouse, if it's a spouse to a parent, doesn't matter what it is, everybody has to file a new application. If that deed changes, you have to file a new application. In Joan Nichols' interview with the, with the Independent Report, she confirmed that any transfer or change in ownership, any transfer, even accepted transfers, requires a new application. So, even the Connecticut Bureau, Farm Bureau agrees with this. There's 15 accepted transfers on page 37 in the guidebook. That's kind of a long thing. I didn't print that out for you guys. If you want to look at it, it's in the book. We can get you copies of it, but accepted transfers, all that basically means is a conveyance tax. You know, if it's one of those 15 reasons, you don't have to pay a penalty, a conveying tax on it. Doesn't mean you do not have to file for an application. The second reason for terminating is the change of use, and we went over some of those earlier. 504H, 12504H is one of the guiding statutes for this, and part of that says, "The use of such land is changed to a use other than that described in the application for the existing classification." So, basically what that means is you file, a farmer comes in and files an original application, and he says orchard. If he changes that to a pasture, he has to file an updated application. He doesn't lose his conveyance tax or, you know, the conveyance part of it, but he still has to let the assessor know that he's changed the use of that property. You know, if it's tillable, we had one property that was all woods. It was under forest. You know, he, they cleared half of it and made it tillable to grow things. I'll get into that one later, but he was required to come in to fill out a new application. As stated earlier, all of these things, when there's a new application, the assessor has to consider those five, five things, among other things, but those are the five big ones: portion of land, the equipment used, the gross income, you know, those type of things. Once a property doesn't meet any of those factors, it's not a farm anymore. That's when it has to be removed from the, from the classification. In my review on all these 77 properties, I contacted every single one of these. We don't have emails, we don't have phone numbers for these people, for anybody, and tell them the assessor, you know, the assessor doesn't have that type of database. But we contacted everybody by a letter. Started this process in September. Everybody was, I think December was probably the last time that the letters went out. Everybody had months. I didn't classify or finish any for everything till the end of February. Everybody had months to get back to me. Many people did. Many people came in with a new foresters report. The foresters were awesome. They were jumping on it in two, three weeks, going out, visiting the properties. You know, it was, you know, they came in with their new applications. There was a lot of people that we just didn't hear anything from. So, in that vein, there's not a lot of new applications that's filed in Enfield, not that, you know, in the past two years that I've been here. There's a few here and there, but, you know, it's, most of the land has already been developed or, you know, is already in the farm. During my review of the applications, I discovered that some of the classifications had been changed from the original. If you remember earlier how I said, you know, the original application is, dictates what the class is, you know, if there's going to be a change, the farmer has to come in and actually update you on that. And following one of the meetings that the BAA had in August, Joan actually came out and said, you know, "Land doesn't grow feet, just doesn't change classification." So, that's a, you know, we all know who Joan is. So, what I did is I returned some of these to the original classification of what they came in as. So, if in 1990 they came in and said it was Class B, the town would send up, out little updates, wasn't an actual application, but just asking a farmer, you know, what you're doing. And my predecessors would change it according to that update. So, the original farmer had tillable B, all of a sudden it's tillable C or D, or whatever, you know, different acreages in those classifications. What I did is I chose the classification from the original application. So, in essence, I didn't pick whether it's tillable A, B, or C or D. The farmer did. He's the one that originally stated what that property was. So, I didn't go out there. I'm not a soil scientist. That's been well debunked. I picked what the farmer picked originally when he came in for the application. As I spoke earlier, there was that one property that was forest. It was a, you know, good-sized property, 20 something acres. They cleared half of it, and I'll discuss that one later on. Smith Trinity Farm. You guys have anything that you want to, everything seemed to be? Yeah, if you want to.
Hi. I'm Donna Murphy. I'm actually the assessor for Danbury, Connecticut. Just to give some backstory on this, I came to Danbury as the assessor in 2020. We did a 2022 revaluation. I followed the same procedures that Todd did. In Danbury, we had 48 properties that were classified as PA 490. Danbury does not have open space. I removed 13 properties that were given open space classification, which actually added $9.7 million to our grand list. I received updated applications for the family transfers, which there are quite a few of. So, 17 people did provide me with updated applications. I kept it, everything the same as it was, but I did need that application on file. I did remove the forest classification from four properties that did not have a foresters' report on file with the city. Since then, for my 10-123 grand list, I have received two new applications that include the foresters' report. So, those properties were added back on for the 23 list. And I also removed the farm classification from seven properties. Same reasons, they were no longer being farmed. They just no longer qualified. It had been kept forward. Some of them weren't even, the property had transferred, and it was never removed. So, at the start of my, my process, I had 48 properties classified. That dropped to 24 for my 10-122 grand list, and now I've since added the two back on. But again, being a new assessor, when you come into a municipality as part of your revaluation, it's really standard to get to know people, and, and most people aren't even upset with it. They, they appreciate the fact that we're following through on things. Nobody gave me a hard time with it. It's pretty cut and dry. You either meet the guidelines, or you don't meet the guidelines. But again, I just wanted to point out, I did do the exact same process in Danbury.
Can you hear me?
Just leave it up. It'll go.
Okay. Is this it? You got me? All right, thank you. So, Tom Denault, once again, I just wanted to clarify one thing that Todd went over somewhat quickly, and it may in part be a question to Todd, just to clarify. He's talking about a conveyance tax related with a new penalty period potentially, and an accepted transfer of a property, let's say, between parent and children. That would be an example of an accepted transfer. So, the penalty period doesn't begin again. We all know that the PA 490 is a 10-year penalty period that is phased out over the 10-year cycle. So, just to clarify that point, that when he was looking and reviewing some of the accepted transfers, that he wasn't restarting the clock.
Thanks for the clarification, Tom. So, Smith Trinity's Farm, this has been a hot topic. I'll give you the timeline on this, on what actually transpired. So, during the revaluation, we all know that Vision went out and was measuring the exterior of all the buildings of all the properties. So, Vision did go out, and they changed this property to partially a commercial entity. And my reason, and I think on this, is because they do have a store, and they do process their own milk. So, it's not normal, I don't want to say it's not normal. You don't find many farmers that are actually doing their own processing of the milk. I think that's what led to the Vision appraisal employee deciding that it was a, a commercial property. I went out during my regular PA 490 review, because I visited every single farm in the town. I went to every single property, took pictures from the road, whatever it might be. I went to, they have two properties there. I don't know if anybody's really familiar with the property, because if you don't see the property lines, that cell tower in the back is on their property, but it's actually on a separate property. There's a little stretch that is the driveway, that's part of the back property. You drive back there for the access, and then they have the, you know, a bunch of the fields out in the back. I started back there. I took a picture of the cell tower to update the photos, looked at the farmland back there and stuff and everything. I drove up to the front, and as, I didn't even get to park. As I was sitting in the parking lot, I believe it was the daughter that came out to me and asked me who I was. I explained to her what I was doing, that I was, you know, you know, this town assessor, I was coming out reviewing the farmlands. At some point, her father walked out, I believe it was her father. We had a few words, and he basically told me to get off the property. So, I wasn't able to do any inspections on, on the buildings, you know, the farm there or anything, so I left the property. I left it as commercial, because that's what the Vision employee that was able to actually go out and look at it decided it was. One of the buildings, it was discovered, was placed on the wrong property. It was placed on that back property with the cell tower, when it was really on the front part of the property. Vision did correct that. They put it on the front of the property, but they also erred and made a mistake and didn't remove it from the second property. So, now it was on both properties. So, for 2021, it was taxed for, the building was taxed twice. Unfortunately, for the appellant, or for, for the owner, they didn't appeal in 2021. A lot of people don't believe me, but we are strictly guided by state statutes. There's certain things I can do and, you know, other things I can't. If you don't appeal, I don't have the authority to go back to change somebody's property, even if it's wrong. If you don't appeal, you're agreeing, you're basically saying you agree with the value, that's what it is, you that's what it is, you can appeal for it for next year. The assessor does not have the authority to go back to change that. Through the town manager, she did a great job as far as talking with the owners, they finally allowed us to come back out. Town manager and I drove out there, we did a quick inspection of the property, maybe took 10 minutes. If I could have granted, if they were granting me that first initial inspection, this problem never would have happened. I would have went through, saw what it was, I'm more experienced than the Vision data collector going out there looking at things, I would have determined what it was and what it wasn't. So this whole issue could have been resolved just on that first inspection. During this whole process, a different building was actually discovered that was not on the tax rolls, hadn't been on, I mean, it was, hadn't been down on the tax years. Vision is the one that put it back on the tax rolls in 2021. That building was there since at least 2005. That's as far as I can go back to verify, because that's the latest aerial. If you look on Google, it goes from 1990 to 2005. 1990 it wasn't there, 2005 it was. So that one building, which is a 1,200 square foot building, was not taxed for all those years. Now, one of the things the assessor does have the authority to do is to go back three years to add something like that. I didn't choose to do that. I'm not going to punish somebody for something that we missed. For whatever the reason, you know, whether it was no permits, it just wasn't picked up, you know, I wasn't going to go back to three years. The good side, you know, the good note at the end of this is that there was a refund issued for the overpayment on this property, for that one building that was taxed twice. On the open space. So even though I discovered that, you know, some prior assessors had granted open space, some of the records that I reviewed went back to the 1970s or the 80s. I'm sorry if you guys don't have the presentation, like I said, these came right off. I put in 50 copies and this is what you guys got. I don't know why these prior assessors put this under there. There was actually notes on the older cards, which is a bullet point further down, that stated, "We don't have open space." But they granted it anyways. I can't tell you why, I mean, obviously nobody can. As far as the open space, I did everything I could. I did not want to take these properties off. I did everything I could, asking the town, I asked the planning and zoning, I asked the town clerk, town attorney, I reached out to the prior town planner, because I knew who that was, he was working in Bloomfield at the time. "You guys have any information whatsoever on local space? Do we have local ordinance?" Nobody could find anything. The town clerk found some town council minutes going back over a decade. She was looking again, because I didn't get the date originally, she hasn't been able to find it again. But whatever was brought before the council was tabled, it was never actually ever voted on. So Enfield never had the local ordinance for open space. I was trying, and this happened early, this was September, October, I was trying to get the town to pass something fast. If they could have done it before I could have signed the grand list, I could have left these properties on. But that's out of my control. Again, the older applications, you know, the BAA has claimed equitable estoppel on this, that's the reason why they granted these, gave it back to them after I removed it. After the 20, I didn't have this superior court case in front of me at the time, to be honest, I didn't think it was going to be an issue that the BAA was going to grant something that the town didn't have. But I gave them a superior court case, which strictly states that the equitable estoppel does not apply in instances like this. It's clear as day in the court case. And I gave that to them before their deliberations, before their hearings in 2022, and they still granted the open space in 2022, even though the town did not have it. Luckily, we all know, you guys passed it two days, a couple nights ago, town finally does have the ordinance, so we'll be able to start accepting applications. Nobody's applied yet, but, you know, we've been accepting them since September 1st. So, that's yours. What is actually equitable estoppel? Most people probably have never even heard of this. You know, it's a fancy legal term, some of the lawyers up there, I'm sure, know what it is. From one of the, from one of the court cases, NFNW, it's a superior court case, and in there it states, "It is the burden of the person claiming estoppel to show that he exercised due diligence to ascertain the truth, and that he not only lacked knowledge of the true state of things, but had no convenient means of acquiring that knowledge." Now, does that apply in Enfield? No, it does not. I mean, everybody knew what was happening. Just the fact that they were plying to the BAA, they knew they had an issue. They knew all the facts in front of them. Equitable estoppel, that doctrine does not apply on those cases. Unfortunately, because of the stance of the BAA and them staying, and they're still saying that we have open space, we now have a new court case from Grassmere Golf Club, Camir, Margot, and William, that now the town is going to have to spend time and money on to defend, which unfortunately for the owners of the golf course and the town, we're all spending time and money on it, that nobody should have to be. So some miscellaneous issues, I want to go over these pretty quick. I only, like I said, I only have 75 minutes to go over a lot of issues, and my presentation doesn't even cover half of the issues, or a third of the issues that happen between the BAA. There's so many more things that we could talk about, but that would take hours. One of the things that's been brought up continually is trespass. So I looked up what trespass was, what the actual state statute was. "It's a person guilty of simple trespass when knowing that such a person is not licensed or privileged to do so, such person enters or remains in or on any premise without intent to harm any property." That's the statute. So the important part of that statute is licensed or privileged to do so. In 1262 subsection 3, that authorizes an assessor to enter any property to do an inspection for, you know, a legitimate reason. I just can't go out there because I think I want to. It has to be for, you know, a legitimate reason. Basilakis versus the town of Bloomfield, that confirms that. That's not the only case, there's other ones out there. You know, it's all been adjudicated. You know, the owner of the property still doesn't have, even if a judge says, you know, "We're going to allow an inspection," the owner doesn't have to. I mean, he's not required to allow somebody on their property, the judge can't force him to do that. But the judge can also dismiss his case if he doesn't allow it. An assessor can't do their job if they don't know what they're looking at, what they're valuing, you know, "I don't know what your house is, you know, without looking at it, what your property is, your farm, if I can't actually go out there." I use the analogy of, you know, your utility company. I mean, they go out and they look at your gas meter, your electric meter, or most of it's electronic now, but those of us that are older, we understand they used to walk around and check these things out. I mean, they don't ask you to come on your property. It'd be impractical. It's impractical for an assessor's office to visit 16,000 properties, knocking on everybody's door, we don't have phone numbers, we don't have emails. You're just going to do the job that way. Easy Pickings is another one, this is one where communication actually works. So before, we had the updated GIS that we implemented this year, we didn't have a really updated GIS with the parcel lines on there, showing where the properties were. So what I was trying to do was I was looking at a Google map, and I was looking at a parcel map on two separate screens, trying to put them together, where they were. You guys know some of these properties are quite large. I made the error, I didn't include part of the woods that was in the Google map, I didn't draw the line in that space. Mr. Keller, me and the town manager, we sat down, had a meeting, I showed them, we showed them the maps, he explained, you know, "Well, no, my property goes down here." You know, and I fixed that problem. I mean, it wasn't even a problem, you know, I fixed the issue before it became an issue. And that was through communication with a farmer. Kogut Farms is another one that's been talked about with the five barns, you know, the year built of 2021, wood versus particle board. We all know particle board is wood, a lot of houses in town have wood, particle board, press board, whatever it might be, depending on the quality of the construction. We only have one, you know, it's wood, it's metal, it's cement, you know, we don't have a, break it down that much. As far as the year built, that does not factor into any valuation. If we go out to a property, a revaluation company goes out to a property and they see a barn out there or something that's not on the card, they're going to measure it and put the year that they were there. Because, you know, again, we're not contacting everybody, we don't know if it was built in 1960, 1940, you know, 2000, and it has no factor in value. The only thing that is value is the style of the building, whether it's a barn, a pool, you know, a shed, whatever it is, the square footage of it, the size, and the condition of it, if it's good, falling down, just built, whatever it might be. Those are the only three factors. So the whole 2021 year built thing, you know, that's just something else to distract people to have them look the other way. Another Brian Kogut property, 76 Park Street. So this one was a complete refusal, what we call a complete refusal. Vision appraisal went out there, knocked on the door, the person told them to get off the property. So they weren't able to do anything on the outside. During my PA 490 review, I didn't, I looked at the card, saw that was refusal, I wasn't going to go up and try to force them to let me on their property, so I just viewed it from the street. This is the house that I was looking at. The BA is claiming that I added basement, that I did this, that I did that. So I'm viewing this from the street. What I did was, this section right here, I added a basement to. I have to use the best knowledge that I have. They say, "Oh, it's obvious from the street that you can tell that that doesn't have a basement." I don't know about you guys, I've been doing this for 20 years, I can't tell if there's a basement under there or not. It's not clear to me. Also through the GIS, the photos that we have and stuff and everything, also discovered there was patios, decks that were on the property that weren't on the field cards. So I added some of those and stuff and everything, trying to measure from the aerial photographs. How do we go back? So I used the best knowledge that I had, you know, in another court case, JCPenney versus Manchester, talks about an assessor being denied access. And that case basically says, "An owner in such a case cannot complain if the assessor, acting in good faith, makes an error in judgment in the valuation process." I mean, the assessor is giving some latitude to use the best available knowledge that we have, because a lot of people just don't want us on their property, which is fine, that's their right, we don't have a problem with that. But we have to guess, and we have to use the best available knowledge, and we have to be fair to the rest of the taxpayers. So we're not going to, you know, value something very low, just because that's, you know, we can't get on the property. You know, so, that's that one. Other issues, the 78 farms that were over assessed. This was due to the BA basically taking the state chart values for farmlands, and they use that as the assessed value, when actually it is the appraised value, meaning that they took, they basically charged 30% more than they should have. What's concerning to me is that there's an appraiser that, and a land attorney on the BAA that specializes in farmland, they talk all about, they know all about farmland, but they don't understand that a state chart is the appraised value and not the assessed value. That just doesn't make sense, it doesn't give me a warm fuzzy feeling. The assessor's office was not certain what the BAA was doing when we got all their decisions back. They created their own form, they've never had this before, they were breaking down every single thing on the property, all the elements, the building, the land, the outbuildings, the farmland. Normally, a BA is going to go in and say, "All right, your house is, your property's worth 350 or 300," and we get one number. They were breaking, you know, "Your house is worth 200, your land is worth this, your outbuildings are worth this." When you go to court, they don't do that. They just say, what, you know, they look at what things are selling for, and they give you a total value. They don't break everything down in all the elements. So we weren't quite sure what they were actually doing, but we just took their bottom number, and that's what we inputted into the system. The BAA actually created a spreadsheet of refunds for everybody. You know, "This is what you overpaid, this is what you should be expecting back for a refund." So the BAA way overstepped their authority on this. They have nothing to do with taxes, the assessor has nothing to do with taxes. We don't do anything with refunds. We actually had some concerned people and caused problems in our office, because people came in and saying, you know, "This is what I'm supposed to get." And when they went to the tax department, you know, we made the corrections in the assessor's office, and that automatically transfers over to a value to the tax department. So when they went over to the tax department to get the refunds, there were different numbers. And people were, you know, understandably upset about that, because they were told one thing, and, you know, that wasn't the fact. Even in my office, I don't tell my staff to talk about the tax bills, because we don't know anything about it. All right, that's not our purview, I send them right over to the tax department, we don't know if they have other refunds, if they owe other bills, older bills, if they're delinquent on stuff, you know, whatever the case may be, we don't know. So, you know, we don't talk about taxes. Luckily, Brian Kogut was the one that informed the BAA of this error, and, you know, I didn't find out Brian actually is the one that actually discovered this till way after the fact. So I know the board has alleged that I've retaliated against Brian because of this. I didn't even know of the fact until way after. Again, I don't instruct my, I instruct my staff not to talk about the taxes. Another issue was the Antonacci Farm, you know, the BAA was alleging that I, the owner saw me on camera, they, you know, informed me to get off, that I was roaming around. From my recollection, what actually happened, I mean, I pulled into the parking area, they have a big parking area in there, I walked into one of the stables, there was somebody in there working, he made a phone call, I waited while he was on the phone, I got the okay to actually walk around, I inspected the whole property while I was there, I actually was able to drive my car down some of his fields and stuff and everything, where they run the horses. I was never actually asked to leave that property. The only two properties that I can ever recall actually being asked to leave was the Smith Trinity Farm in Jarmuk. And Jarmuk actually, that day, just an hour or two later, I forget the timeframe, whatever, but that day, he drove me around to every single one of his properties. So he actually, I mean, he came screaming in at one of his vacant lands and stuff and everything, parked right in front of my car, so I couldn't move it. Very confrontational. His father ended up showing up an hour or so later, I mean, I actually got a phone call and, you know, we drove around and he showed me every single one of his properties. Another concerning thing is Tom Tyler's actually stated in the BAA meeting in August, that, you know, at the Marco 105, I don't think his records are that accurate anyway. That's pretty concerning to me, for a BAA member, not to trust the town records. I didn't create these records, these records are decades old, I mean, they're a compilation, you know, over years and years and years. For a BAA, sitting BAA member to say they don't trust town records is pretty concerning to me. So back into the revaluation portion of this, how a revaluation works. I'm not going to get into all details, it's very, I don't want to say complex, but there's a lot of steps involved in it. Basically, I mean, it's a tightly, very tightly regulated process. The state's involved in it. So basically what happens is my office, on a monthly basis, we send out sales reports to the Office of Policy and Management, OPM, all the properties that are sold that month. The revale company does what they do, inspections, whatever it might be and stuff and everything, they complete the revale, and after running all their data and numerous reports and ratio studies and whatever it might be, and obviously I'm involved in that, the assessor's involved in all that, making sure everything looks right and stuff and everything, that gets sent off to OPM. OPM then does their own analysis. They confirm that everything is within certain standard parameters, you know, whether it meets the COD, I mean, these are all technical terms, but COD, PRD, I mean, these are all parameters that they have to fall within certain areas of a house. You know, a house sold for 200,000, it can't be 10%, 20% higher, or lower, both ways. So OPM actually looks at all this, they actually certify, and they review and certify every revaluation in the state. So in 2021, OPM reviewed Enfield's revaluation, and they certified it with no issues. We didn't have to revisit anything, you know, if they do find something, you know, they'll send it back to the town, "Please look at this, redo it." We didn't have that issue in town. So, I mean, the BAA's claimed that, you know, I've targeted certain properties or classes of properties, that just can't really happen in a broad sense with the way the framework of the revaluations are set up. It's just impossible, I mean, it's going to be caught. I don't control, I don't wake up in the morning and say, "Hey, I'm going to go take Townsville and raise it 10%." That's just not the way a revaluation works. Or, "I'm going to take all the farms and I'm just going to, you know, throw them under the bus." I mean, it's not how it's done, it can't be done that way. I mean, it's regulated, so it can't be done that way. Do you guys have anything you want to say about revaluation?
So the COD and the PRD coefficient of dispersion and price-related differential, in a layman's terms, what it basically statistically analyzes programmatically is it looks at all those people that sold their properties within your community. all those people that sold their properties within your community, and then it replicates asset values within the CAMA database to people that didn't sell their property. So you can imagine that now, when you have a database that, let's say, has errors in it, or omissions of property, that it creates an inequitable balance across those sales. And your sales could be actually perfect, because you'll go into an MLS site, and you'll look at the data behind the sale, you'll see everything is refreshed, and now you try to populate those types of sales into your database of properties that are outdated, you can't gain access to, so you don't know if the kitchen was updated or not, and it creates these inequitable balances. The Board of Assessment Appeals is there to mitigate those types of circumstances. And I did view the testimony on YouTube, and you could definitely see that the Board of Assessment Appeals is really, really doing their job. Granted, we see some conflict, obviously, between some of the approaches that Todd has taken in the fieldwork aspect of things, and where some of the confrontation has occurred. But statistically speaking, if the price-related differential, or the coefficient of dispersion testing was way out of balance, there would be markers that would scream out within those sales that we're reporting monthly to the Office of Policy and Management. So that's one of the platforms that is at least in the favor to say that your 2021 revaluation had good grand list statistics to it, from at least one platform.
Alright, so the next slides are going to be on the, what has been termed as the fountain of youth, the effective year bill. I really don't know what to say about this. I've had three, there's been three assessors that have talked about this, there's been the revaluation that's talked about this, there's been the independent review, Mario that's looked at this and all debunked it, and says that effective year in Enfield doesn't play any role in value. I had two assessors at the last BA meeting, that where they walked out, that was ready to talk on it. I have two assessors here that can speak to this. The only thing, and I'll ask them if they want to chime in, I know we're at 45 minutes already or so, so we have to move along a little bit, but the one thing I will chime in, that they did use Donna Dubonowski's property, 23 Betty Road. They showed you the back of the property cards, and they showed you the print dates. So the print dates is when a card was printed. The town had a conversion back in 2019, where they transferred one software and upgraded it. So what Vision did is they created a PDF for all those years, you know, to whatever the years were. So some of the print dates they're showing are a day apart, or a couple hours apart. That's all because that's when the cards were printed by Vision of the previous years. The years that they were showing were from 2015 and 2016. So their own evidence is showing you that it, Fountain of Youth isn't something I created, it's not even a thing. You know, it happened in 2016, it happened in 2011, it happens every revaluation year. If you look at the chart, you know, the EYB is going up from 1984 to 1992, the depreciation, which is really the number you want to look at, because that's what is your valued on, goes down. So even though the EYB goes up, the depreciation's going down. And I don't know if you guys want to talk on this, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, because it has nothing to do with revaluation, has nothing to do with value.
If you want, I'll just... Just for the record, in Danbury, I use a different software system. We don't even use effective year bill. The depreciation is based on the year that the house was built and the condition of the home. It's not, it doesn't factor, I've used Vision in the past, I was the assessor on Windsor Locks for quite a few years, we had Vision. And again, effective year bill, it strictly comes from the year the house was built and the condition of the house.
Thank you. And the only other thing I'll say about it is, there's, we do not enter, manually enter, the effective year bill. There's not one property in town, in the database, where I manually go in and I type in a year. It is all based on the actual year built, which is factual, and the condition of the property. So, it's also been talked about, you know, the excessive amount of appeals that we've had for the 21 revaluation. These are the actual numbers. I've heard 700, I think I've heard 900 from the BAA in some of their meetings. These are the actual numbers that we've had. In 2006, we had 630 appeals. Alright, that was just before the crash in 2008, values were very high, going up at that point in time, so there was a lot of appeals. 2011 and 16, you know, after the crash, you know, there wasn't a lot of, you know, values were going down and stuff and everything, people were foreclosing, whatever, there wasn't a lot of appeals. 2021, we had 389 appeals. 2022, we had 220. But, so, even if you take those numbers as they are, 389, which in 21 was just like 2006, the values were skyrocketing, they're going up 30%. That's still a lot less than what 2006 was. But let's look at the 389 and pull that apart. 94 of those appeals were taken out by one owner. Jarmuk, who was either the owner or agent for 94 of those properties. 122 appeals were for motor vehicles. First time, I asked my staff, the first time in memory that they can remember that motor vehicles were actually heard in the spring, because it's rarely ever done. 15 were for personal property, so in the end, we only had 215 appeals for real estate. In a year where real estate was skyrocketing at 30%, 215 appeals out of 16,000 properties? You guys should be applauding. I mean, that's amazing. Some of them, you know, just didn't show up, you know, there was a select few under 20, I think, that either just didn't show up, or withdrew from the hearing. Out of that 215, this is even going down further, there was only 111 individual owners. A lot of these people, like Jarmuk, Kogut, you know, they came in with multiple appeals. There was one out-of-state tax rep that goes around and solicits businesses, hey, let me, you know, represent you to get a lower tax rate. Not necessarily that the owner wanted to, but it doesn't cost them anything, so he had 11 properties. So out of that 215, there was actually only 111 dissatisfied taxpayers that were complaining, or wanted to appeal their assessment. Another issue that we've had is that the BAA agreed to hear properties over a million dollars. So by statute, the BAA can be relieved, they're not required to hear anything that's assessed over a million dollars. Most, you know, people are laymen, you know, they just don't have the knowledge. The BAA, this BAA did actually hear all of those properties. They didn't refuse to hear anybody. The problem with that is the BAA lowered some of those properties, and some of those properties still sued the town. So that puts the town at a disadvantage, because now, instead of that million dollar property that the town originally had under revale, BA lowered it to 800,000. When we go to negotiate or go to court, we have to start with that 800,000. We can't go back up to the million dollars. We have to go with the BA, you know, the lowest number that the town had. So that really hurts the town, puts it at a disadvantage. 2022, I'll go over that quick. You know, there's basically 220 actually heard by the BAA, 73 of them are real estate. You all know that I removed some real estate, I removed their decision, so a bunch of those were actually repeat from the 2021. Again, inordinate number of motor vehicles that were heard. There was a comment made that I thought the BA hearings were unprofessional, because I did sit in on some of them. That comment, I just put a little context to it. So the BAA is supposed to be an impartial municipal body. Its purpose is to neither assist the appealing property owner, or support the assessors. What I saw, or from what I witnessed, they were pretty much coaching the actual appellants coming in. I mean, they were putting words in their mouth, you don't mean retaliation, you mean retribution, or vice versa, whatever it was. I'm going to go over an appeal later on in one of the six cases, where it actually looks like the BAA wrote down, crossed off, what the appellant put as his value on his application, and wrote his own number in there. It's signed off by the appellant, but it certainly looks like it was actually the BAA that wrote it in, which was $170,000 less than what the appellant came in with. So again, you know, it seemed like the BAA was acting as advocates, instead of that impartial board that they're supposed to. You know, they're not really supposed to We went over this a little bit already. BA's alleged, you know, that motor vehicle letter that I sent out was based on a lie, I never received anything from the DMV. We've already gone over, we receive a list from the DMV twice a year, these guys can confirm. Actually, the supplemental just came out, we're going to be getting that in a couple days, once our vendors release it for us. That's the database that the letter was referring to, that's the notice we get from the DMV, that you have a registered vehicle, whether it's new or not. And that was the confusing part about the message, is the message stated, you know, you're, we got notified by the registry that you have a new registration. And a lot of people, it's been registered for 20 years. So I understood that, it was confusing. I took that letter from my previous municipality, where I've been running that software for a while. So basically, once you have it for a while, the only people you're sending out to is somebody that's newly registered, that, because, you know, you already have the information, hopefully you already have the information for all the other vehicles that you have. But I changed that language going forward, so hopefully that's going to smooth things over, as far as that goes. We also have the new software that we're using, the VIN code, that helps to identify the incomplete vehicles. I don't know if everybody's aware, but, you know, we get the VIN numbers from the DMV. A lot of those come across when we look them up in the pricing guides, as the cabin chassis. I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but, you know, a garbage truck is going to come off as a cabin chassis. And we can look that up in a book, and it's going to come up with a value, but the value is only going to be for that cabin chassis. You know, if you have like a garbage truck, just like the town ones, the back end of that truck can be worth more than what the cabin chassis is. You know, the cabin chassis might be 30 grand, the back end of that might be 50 grand. One of the issues, and one of the reasons why people were screaming, is because of this, I was discovering a lot of that, their $20,000 vehicle, all of a sudden went to 50. Doesn't mean my 50 was the wrong value, it means that 20 was always under assessed all those years, it was never picked up. One of the motor vehicles' issues was talked about was Antonacci. So my association, CAAO, these guys can attest, in 2021, they reached out to the surrounding states, asking for any motor vehicle that was registered in your state that had a Connecticut mailing address. We did receive something from Maine, as well as a couple other states. Antonacci, under different business names, whether it was USA Hauling, I think Murphy's Recycling, they had multiple different names, but they had 131 commercial trailers, all being mailed to 15 Mullen Road. We just received another list from Maine for 2023, and they have 114 trailers on there. I did a quick comparison, 107 of those are in both years. So 107 of those have been registered at least for three years in Maine. I estimated the value of over $2 million on those trailers for '21, with a tax loss of 57,000. In '22, a tax loss of 67,000. So just those two years on those trucks, is $124,000 tax loss, just on those trailers. And guess who has to pay and subsidize that? I did try to work with Antonacci. I called a rep, we had multiple emails going back and forth. I think I included that in the handouts, if not, I can get it to you. But I asked several times, where are these trailers located? You know, if they're in another town, if they're, you know, in Summers or in Hartford, good. I mean, you know, they're being picked up somewhere, done deal, I don't have to worry about it. They always came back to me with, well, they don't leave from, and they don't return to Enfield. So it was obvious, I mean, the BAA made a joke about this, but it was obvious they knew the law. Because that's, they were, that literally comes from the statute, you know, return to and leave from. And I kept asking them, at one point, at the end, I just said, just tell me where they are. I mean, if they're not here, we don't have to worry about it. And I didn't hear back from them. In the statutes, it's also allowed that if they're not picked up anywhere, we all know it's out-of-state vehicles, it's against the law to run in Connecticut, if, you know, if you're here for a certain period of time, you're supposed to register in Connecticut. The statute allows municipalities to claim those vehicles to wherever the corporate office is, wherever that bill is getting mailed to. So since everything was going to Enfield, I put those on the personal property. I couldn't do them under motor vehicle, because that's against the law, but I put them on the personal property. And the BAA removed those for both years. And I reached out to other towns, I reached out to Summers, I reached out to Hartford. I figured they might be in Hartford, because they're a recycling company and stuff and everything. I asked the assessor over there, said, hey, can you go out and check, you know, are they in the yard?
Todd, you're at one hour, 15 minutes ago.
Thank you. And he didn't find anything. Quickly go over these, some of the other vehicle issues, and I'm going to go kind of quick, because we only have 15 minutes. This is a 21 F350 owned by Jarmuk, it's not his truck, it's a stock photo. The MSRP on this, remember, this is a brand-new vehicle in '21, the MSRP on it, 64,000. BA valued this at 20,000. They also had a 21 F450, a larger truck, they also valued that one at 20,000. Just these two vehicles alone, Jarmuk saved over $1,000 in taxes by not paying. Other vehicles by Jarmuk, they had two identical 2006 Peterbilt semi-trucks. Basically, the VIN numbers matched up until the 10th, 11th digit, or whatever, basically the exact same vehicle. We had them both valued at 47,000. The BAA valued truck two at $2,500. Now, I don't, I think Jarmuk didn't appeal the first one, because they sold it in December. They sold that truck for $84,000. Now, we had that bill of sale, I gave it to the BAA prior to their hearings, prior to the, you know, Jarmuk going for the hearings, and obviously was ignored, because they actually lowered it down to $2,500. An $84,000 truck BAA keeps stating that you can use the Kelley Blue Book, they said that in their August meeting, you know, you can either use JD Power or Kelley Blue Book. Assessor's job is to be fair and equitable with everybody. If you're using different pricing guidelines, that's not being fair and equitable to everybody, because everybody knows Kelley Blue Book is lower than JD Power. You shouldn't have a board stating something that's not fact. Everybody, the state, every other town uses JD Power. And you guys, I know, we don't have much time, but you guys use JD Power as well, or, I mean, the whole state does. I mean, even the DMV, everything comes from the DMV price with that. So if you use anything else, you know, you're basically subsidizing everybody else's vehicle. They also claimed that I changed the antique plate application, that I added a mechanic's affidavit, had to be notarized. I had my assistant look this up, we went back to 2014, and the application has not changed since at least 2014, probably before that. What's interesting is Tom Tyler actually files an antique application every single year for the last several years for one of his vehicles, so he should know that that form has not changed. Since that time, I have removed that. Actually, when I first saw it in 2021, I thought it was excessive, I was going to remove it. We had so much going on, obviously, with everything with the revale, didn't get done. I have since removed those two things. I actually had a taxpayer come in yesterday, thanking me profusely for making it easier. Donna Dubonowski, she stated that, I just want to put this out there, so that the people know the fact, stated that if you're due refund from that mistake that the BAA made, that you have October 1st to request it. That's not true. You have until September 30th of 2025. You have three years until, from the date that the tax was due. So you actually have until June 30th of 2025. The FOIA Act, BAA stated they didn't want to return their documents, because they were afraid they were going to be altered. How did they, you know, I don't understand the thinking on that. How did they think, before they even gave it to us? I mean, they stated, because when they got some stuff back, they saw some notes scribbled on them. How did they know that before they even gave them back? You know, Tom Tyler has stated that he wants a fair hearing for, you know, for the taxpayer. Again, I'll go through, they've disregarded some of the statutes. If you're not following the law, you're not treating everybody fair, because anybody that didn't appeal is basically taking the brunt of it, and having to pay for the people that did. Everything that they gave away, that the BAA gave away, someone else has to pay for. And I understand the BAA, rightfully so, is going to make some reductions. I mean, that's their job, they're supposed to fix things. I'm not saying it's supposed, you know, but it's not supposed to be 90, 95% of the appeals they hear, that they grant. Again, Tom Tyler's also made the statement of perception becomes reality, and that's certainly a true statement, especially when you have multiple people stating the same as leading statements and lies. You tell You tell the same lie enough times by enough people, eventually people, unfortunately, that's the state we're all in, right? Fake news, nobody wants to hear it. You know, you put stuff out there enough, enough times and stuff and everything, everything, everybody believes it. So everything basically that's being said and done by the BAA since the '21 hearings is basically just a red herring. It's to distract everything from what is actually transpired, all their actions. Um, we've gone over a lot of them already. They don't want you looking at that, they want you to look the other way. You know, there's been several, several prominent people actually spreading false information, whether it's Facebook, social media, the radio, there's just been outright lies about there. I mean, somebody, it's actually been stated that the, the report says I, I broke the law. Nowhere in that independent report states that the assessor broke the law. It's just not fact. I put this in at the last second. Um, I watched the town council meeting, uh, the other night, and I found this very interesting. There were several people stating that town employees don't deserve, deserve to be attacked. That lies on the radio are outrageous. So the assessor's office and myself personally has been attacked on social media and radio for more than 18 months. Let that sink in. I mean, you guys are complaining for a couple of weeks, I've been dealing with it for 18 months. Lies, misstatements, where's the outrage for that? One quote that really stuck to me was, it shouldn't happen to me and it shouldn't happen to anyone else that is sitting here. So they've always also alleged that the, you know, the IR is biased. Uh, you know, they're spinning facts to create their own narrative. They like to put derogatory names on things like the rigged report, the Star Chamber. I mean, that's just a tactic to distract people from, from what's actually happening. Um, they alleged collaboration between the town and, and the independent report, homework assignments. I mean, how is a review supposed to be done unless people are working together? I mean, they need documents, um, they have to do the interviews. Homework assignments were Mario saying, hey, I need this document, I, you know, you need to get me these emails, you need to get me this stuff. Those are the homework assignments. There's no collaboration. I mean, we're cooperating with an interview to, to get it done. Um, the BAA initially, um, you know, they refused to turn over the documents for months. And the only reason why they were interviewed near the end of the process is because they refused to turn them over. How can the reviewer actually question somebody if they don't have the documents and the information to be able to ask the right questions? And this just elongated the whole entire process. Um, you know, they, they call the report bogus. Um, you know, Rachel Barrett has actually said, you know, that you don't have to accept a report at face value. Well, apparently the only thing they, they want to accept is the things that reflect negatively on me, but nothing on them. So obviously they're cherry picking. So, near the end. We're getting close, right?
Yes, eight minutes, seven minutes.
So the BI, BAA has widely spread the comment of, you know, Helms mostly complied with the, with the law. I don't know why that terminology was used by the, by the reviewer. Um, I knew it was going to come back to bite me to, you know, that terminology. But what else does it say about me in there? It says, I generally complied with his statutory mandates and adhered to the accepted best practices. He's qualified for the position, justified and removing, correctly applied. The report nowhere says that I broke the law, misapplied anything, or ignored the state statute. What the IR says about the board, acted in an unnecessarily adversarial manner and disregarded the law on several occasions. Clearly misapplied statutes and, you know, conflated, confused them with another one. Statement is incorrect as a matter of law. Aired and restating, uh, property owners, PA 490 classifications, aired by restating those classifications. Clear error for the BAA to hear an untimely appeal. They actually heard an appeal that there wasn't an appeal for, the guy never applied an application for. They exceeded their permissible scope, exercised authority that does not possess. Improperly exempted real estate and reduced value to zero. Aired by reducing assessments, no legal support for the BAA's decision. So these are all quotes right out of the independent report. Um, BAA improperly exempted carports, withholding documents exposed the town to potentially liable, potential liability under FOIA. Quickly on the, the whole bill that was, Carroll Hall tried to get past Representative Hall, um, I'm going to go through this really quick. The original bill had nothing to do with the 12-111, the assessor's office. The timeline is there, you guys can look at it. It was originally submitted in March. It was all about a task force about zoning for vacant lots. Um, there was some activity up and, up until April. The legislation, um, session closed on June 7th. The, um, the amendment was filed on, uh, June 7th, the day, the last day of it. So that basically changed the body of the text, totally removed the zoning thing and put in the language for the 12-111. They didn't change the name of it, the title, so if you wanted to look for the title, you couldn't find it. They actually just changed the body. Um, this was, there was no fiscal note, there was no public hearing like any normal bill would be. Um, it was placed on the consent agenda, um, where, you know, multiple bills, I don't know, I tried finding it really quick, but I don't know if there's 20, 30, 40 bills that were placed on there, but they're all voted on at once, and that's the reason why it was 100% voted. So, and it was actually voted on eight minutes before the session ended, at 11:52 PM. 11:21, or 6:21, it became a public act, 6:29, it was vetoed by the governor. Um, none of these associations, um, were for the bill, they were all against it, OPM, CCM, um, my association, we all lobbied against this bill. Um, there was no discussion from the state rep to any of the associations that I know of. Um, you know, luckily the, the governor did veto this. And she stated that she was just clarifying, this actually was a substantive change, she was removing language. So in summary, um, of the 21 and 2022 appeals, the tax loss in, in 2021 was 650,000, 2022 was 332, so almost a million dollars, probably more than that with the fall hearings with all the motor vehicles and stuff and everything. And guess who has to pay for that? Every other taxpayer in town. Uh, I believe this is my, ooh. You gotta give me a little time, I have a current slide. Uh, I gotta go to the end. So my last slide. If you don't enjoy me here. So in summary, um, the IR does not state that I ever disregarded or ignored any state statutes, whatever's said by anybody on social media, no matter who you are. Um, the IR, uh, the independent report does state that BAA misapplied and ignored statutes, that they overstepped their authority by hearing a case, you know, when there wasn't even an application filed. What do we need to do in the end? Everybody needs to work on their communication skills, me included. Um, it has to be done by everybody. Best practices should be defined by Enfield as far as the attendance and the recording of the BAA hearings. This is all in, in the report. Um, BAA should immediately return all the documents. Um, you know, that should be no question. I certainly plan to reflect and revise all my decisions. I mean, I think this has made me a better assessor, a lot, you know, what, nobody wants to be scrutinized the way everybody is, but if you can take it constructively, um, take the good things out of it, um, hopefully it makes you a better person and a better an assessor, better at your job. My hope is the BAA actually does the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Two minutes to spare. All right, um, I know the BAA needs to use this front table for a presentation, um, and I do want to make a, a quick announcement. Um, as you've all discovered, that there was a photocopying goof, um, in the packet that was, uh, handed out by Todd. Town staff is, A, going to put the presentation, what happened is all the even pages didn't get copied, um, although it is double sided. But the town manager's office will put the presentation on the website under the town manager's page, and they are making copies that will be available, um, for the public to take at the end of this meeting. I would slide over because they want the, the main, and they said that they've got a video that they're showing as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Could you please make sure that whatever is being presented, I have an opportunity to see?
Is you, you're, you have a video, correct?
Yes, good video.
And that will be able to stream, correct?
Well, I have exhibits too, but they're just not going to be shown on the screen. And I am going to turn them in as exhibits, but they're, I'm going to refer to them, but I'm not going to show them.
Okay.
As far as any video or, or other electronic presentations, just to make sure that they'll, I'll be able to see them on the screen, I appreciate that.
And Steve, that, that will stream, correct? If it's the video that's being shown?
Can you ask Alex?
Okay.
Thank you.
You might, you might have people see on his side, you might watch YouTube. But yeah, you can watch it on YouTube.
You may have to watch them.
Okay, so Attorney Capola, you would have to watch on YouTube where it is live. Are you ready?
Put our stuff together, thank you.
Yeah, but we're not in official break, so they'll, they'll come back.
You ready, Tom?
Is this working? Can you hear me?
Tom, are you ready?
I'm all set, yeah.
All right, so now, next, we have the presentation by the Board of Assessment Appeals, which will be for one hour and 15 minutes, and the floor is yours, Tom.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Tyler, 18 Bridge Lane, Enfield, BAA Chairman. And, uh, tonight, the reason we're here is to discuss the independent investigation or review that in our opinion was neither independent nor a fair, impartial or objective review or investigation. Our presentation is going to be based upon facts and documents obtained from electronically accessible sources. The first set are those that are released to the public, which consists of the report and its appendix. The second are ones that are actually been withheld from public view or obstructed from public view. There are about 10,000 of those documents in the town clerk's office. They're only accessible if somebody goes to the clerk's office, Monday through Friday, nine to five, to see it. It's not available electronically, uh, but we have access. So our opinion is that the report and appendix are in fact cherry picked by the administration in order to convey to the public one set of facts and circumstances, but the administration's version of transparency stops at the door where the 10,000 documents are also available electronically, are accessible electronically, but not available because they don't allow them. I'm referring to those as the haystack ones, because it's like trying to find a needle in a haystack. When this, uh, investigation was started, was August 29th of '22, when the town council hired Burka Moses. But that's not really when it started with Burka Moses. I have a series of emails from Attorney Talberg, from his private law firm, where he, back in June of, uh, '22, June 15th of '22, uh, first sends an email to Mario Capolo, inviting him to, um, accept a case that's being referred by Talberg from his private law firm. There's a series of emails, about seven or eight, and it ends up where the, um, Attorney Talberg tells him, Mario, "I've been given authority by the town manager and council leadership," that would be Mayor Crisati, Deputy Mayor Sakala, "to retain Burka Moses for this purpose." The purpose being, uh, asking for a bid waiver to retain independent review of revaluation issues." He then, uh, asked for a conflict check. Mario sends back to him, saying, "We're all set, I have no conflict." And to which James Talberg, on June 17th, 11:43 in the morning, from his private law firm, not from the town attorney's office, tells him, "Perfect. Thank you for agreeing to assist us in this matter, and we look forward to working with you." That's the first part of collaboration that's, that will mar, uh, this entire investigation. Talberg, even before interviews or anything else takes place, is sending out emails marked privileged and confidential, attorney-client privileged, as, uh, to Ellen and Helms, seeking information on 78 Park Avenue in Lorrie Longy. That's when the obsession with Lorrie Longy has begun. So as you put together Attorney Talberg's handpicked ally in place, the fix was in to whitewash the administration by having it investigate itself using its proxy, Burka Moses, to produce a rigged report. To support this conclusion, I'm going to play some video clips of recordings of interviews conducted by Burka Moses. And of course, uh, Burka Moses, remember, has agreed to assess us, meaning the administration, through Talberg, and looking forward to working with you throughout this. So the very first person interviewed was the town manager, who gave Burka Moses his marching orders for about an hour and a half or so, and then mused about her goals upon receipt of the report. Before playing that though, I want you to, to, to think of it this way, when you're listening. Not once was there any concern about the outcome or conclusion of this report, since it's been predetermined with the selection of Burka Moses. Ellen hopes to have the report before BAA hearings in March, in order to blunt the impact of BAA decisions again. Her plans, which you're going to listen to, include letting everybody know that Donna has not been reappointed, maybe ask for some resignations of the board, maybe get some new appointments, and maybe pack the BAA by adding two more members. No consideration of this report points to any administration changes, so listen carefully, please. First clip.
You know, my goal is, I was, it was my hope.
This report would, um, be done before that process starts, um, but respecting the integrity of a thorough report, we know now that that's probably not going to happen. So, um, the only step that the town council has taken in regard to the future of the March hearings is, um, Ms. Dubinowski's appointment came due at the end of December, and they chose to take no action. So she continues to serve until replaced or reappointed. Um, the thought process is, is that depending on the outcome of the report, that there may be new people appointed, um, there may be an ask for resignations, or we may, if we are able to, and I'm not clear on this law, um, oftentimes the appointing authority can add additional, two additional assessment members during, um, the appeals period in order to manage volume. Not being a lawyer, I am not clear whether that would be something that we could do in Enfield to blunt any type of effect this year, um, because we do not have an elected board, we have an appointed board. So that was another... So, that was another option that we've thought about. So, at this point, we've kind of taken pretty much a monitoring, but hands-off process in regard to the BAA, as this investigatory review has been occurring.
Ellen, that he's going to do his best to finish this, hopefully by February, before the next BAA hearings start. He's going to do his darndest. And of course, there's no discussion or consideration if the report blames the administration instead of the BAA. So, I'll let you play that one as clip two.
Initially, I had endeavored to have this completed before the end of February, by the end of February. And we're going to do our best to get it done as quickly as possible.
And then, again, there's no question on the outcome of the investigation. The only thing that he's talking about is timing, as he tries to accommodate his client, who he thinks is the town manager, not the town of Enfield. Are you ready for clip three? Okay, while he gets ready for clip three, this is again Mario reassuring, this time Todd Helms, that he's working hard to get this done, so that Todd can continue the processes and do his job. Todd acknowledges in this that it's been tough to remain silent, but chuckles knowing he's about to be cleared by the report. Again, there's no question as to the report's outcome, only the timing. Clip three.
Issue. But we're going to try to trudge through this as quickly as possible, and it is possible. We may have the report done by the end of February. We're going to do our darndest to get it done as quick as possible. Well, as you said, still ensuring as much as possible to support.
As possible. And I think it'd be helpful for you, quite frankly, if this gets done sooner than later, so that you could kind of move on with, you know, your processes.
Well, the board is coming up again, so I mean, it would be nice if it was done before the next board meeting.
Yeah, we'd like to get it done before the end of February. So, we're going to now, so when you talk to Vicky, just let her know, like, we want to kind of put this into high gear now, and Matt and I want to really basically give this our, I almost say, pretty much our immediate attention. We'd like to get it wrapped, if possible, we'd like to have a draft report, you know, within three, four weeks, so we really want to get it moving.
Sounds good, it's been difficult to not say anything to anybody.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, I think it would be helpful for you in particular to do your job if we could get this done and get beyond all this stuff, so anyways, with that being.
Okay, then the next clip I'm going to play is where Burka Moses, again, this time asks Todd, who should be interviewed? And then he discusses Vicky Rose, who's the second-in-command there, and invites Todd to sit in on that interview with Vicky Rose. So, that's unheard of for an investigator to ask someone who's supposedly he's looking into their activities, who to talk to and to sit in on in a subordinates interview. To our understanding, this shows the fix is in. And then Ellen has suggested certain people to be interviewed. Mario explains this to Todd, and they discuss those people. So, with that, fourth clip, please.
Vicky Rose in your office.
Yes, I mean, she's out today and tomorrow, so if you contact her, she won't respond till Monday, but.
That's fine, all right, so she should be easy to, I mean, get in touch with in schedule. And by the way, you're more than welcome to, if you'd like to sit in and listen to her interview, you're welcome to. I could send you the link to participate from your office. You don't have to, there's no need for you to, but if you want to, you're welcome to. And then, one person, so with Ellen, we talked about, I asked her, I said, "Who do you think may be some people to interview?" Because I think they wanted us also to interview some property owners. She mentioned Bill Ketchner from, Kelleher from Easy Pickens. We talked about like the Moose Club, and anyway, so, you know, as we're going through this process, if there's this interview, just think, if there's anybody else who you think may be helpful for us to talk to, you know, let us know as we're going through this, okay?
Okay.
Okay, now, a comment on this is also that at this stage, he's already met with Ellen, that's number one meeting. Number two meeting is Todd. And then Mario suggests to Todd, besides sitting in on Vicky's interview, how about Kirchner, which is actually Antonacci, that's the Antonacci person. That one, we're taking up in Appeal 41, some address that later. Second one is Easy Pickens, that's Bill Kelleher. And then the third is the Moose Club, which is Appeal 221, to be taken up later, so talk about that later. However, with Bill Kelleher, there's an email that Kelleher actually sent to Ellen Zappo, or excuse me, yeah, to Ellen Zappo, and actually Matt Desmond was involved in it too, or Despard, I'm sorry. Matt Despard, and that's where Bill Kelleher picked out 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 flaws or major complaints he had with the way he was being treated, and his applications were being torn apart by this assessor. So, what happens is, on page one of the report, Mario lists all of the people he interviewed. So, with all of the problems going on with the farmers and the daycares and the charities and the nonprofits in this town, Mario interviewed one taxpayer, just one, and that was Art Mullin. Not one other taxpayer from the town of Enfield got interviewed. That sounds fair and impartial, doesn't it? There were no farmers interviewed. And even with Mario at the very beginning, saying, gee, Ellen suggested Antonacci, Kelleher, and the Moose. None of them got interviewed. Nobody got called on that. On page one of the report, there's a bunch of people listed, in addition to three Board of Assessment Appeals members who live in town. The only other one interviewed who lives in town's a taxpayer, was Art Mullin. Nobody else, other than, you know, people that work for the town. In addition, he interviewed Paul Freya from the town of Westport, an assessor, and Denise Hames, the town of Weston, an assessor. But he neglected to say, oh, by the way, they're clients of mine. He's represented him in court, and with one of them, Denise, he donated $500 to something she had for a GoFundMe page February of this year. You think he maybe should have told people that? Additionally, as he lists James Williams, he lists him as a Vision Government Solutions Senior Appraiser. He's not an appraiser. Later on, I'm going to show you what he is, because we have a clip of him playing and a comment about effective year bill, you know, the fountain of youth, that it is related to value. And then he lists, he fails to list Lorrie Longy as an appraiser. She's the only one that's a licensed or certified appraiser in the state of Connecticut, has anything to do with this whole thing. Nobody from Vision was an appraiser. Todd's not an appraiser. His two friends that are assessors, they're not appraisers. The one he brought to the cage show, they're not appraisers. But he fails to state, she's an appraiser. Fails to state Donna Dubanowski is a Realtor. Fails to state, I'm an attorney. But everybody else, he puts down all their titles. Again, it's discrediting and diminishing us. So then, next thing that happens is, okay, the next clip is going to be about a lot of misinformation that is being spread in terms of who hired Todd. Now, if you want to give somebody credit, or you want to give them blame, let's at least get it straight, because there's been a lot of false news or fake news about, the prior council did it, prior administration did it. I'm going to play this clip from Todd, that he'll tell you who interviewed him and who hired him. So now, number five, please.
When were you appointed the assessor of Enfield?
First, 2021.
And were you appointed by the Director of Finance?
I was hired, I mean, my initial meeting was with the Director of Finance and Steve Blenda, who's the Director of HR. I mean, I got the letter from HR, so I mean, I believe it was Director of Finance, John Lowcombs, that made the.
Again, I'm not saying credit or blame. I'm just saying, at least say it right. And stop blaming prior councils or administrations. The next clip I have is that Todd is asked by Mario to please email his resume that he filed with his application, and Todd agrees he's going to do that. So, we're going to play that clip. Six, please.
Do you have a resume? Because that'd make my life a little easier. Did you have like a resume submitted with your job, with the application for Enfield?
I do.
Okay, would you mind emailing it to Matt and I whenever you get a chance?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, now, the resume that got filed with his application, that resume ended up in the haystack. You know, the one you can't find unless you go down there? It's not available online? But there was a revised resume, not the one filed with his application, that actually got placed in the appendix, I think it was the first one there, to show how qualified he is. It's just not the one he filed with his application for the town of Enfield job. And curiously, Lorrie Longy provided a resume that's quite impressive. And again, she's a BAA member, and her resume shows that she's the only state-certified appraiser. Not Todd, not Vision. She actually is a specialist on residential commercial real estate. So, as a specialist, her opinion would carry substantial weight as to value, because that's what to her, she's trained in. So, her resume was relegated to the haystack. So, you don't find that one unless you go looking for it. Okay, now, there's a lot of talk about Burka Moses and rendering all these opinions and about what's legally, you know, the board did something legally wrong and whatever. I just want to play you what Mario says, what weight you should put to his opinions. So, this is clip number seven, please.
I want to tell you about some specific appeals. So, in general, I'm not going to ask you or anyone else in the BAA about all these decisions you made, because, you know, it's irrelevant what I think about decisions I made. Whether I was sitting in your shoes, what would I think, who cares? It's irrelevant, I'm not, I'm not on the BAA.
Okay, so then he also reiterates, he's not going to opine on BAA decisions because it's just not appropriate. So, that's clip number eight, please.
For the simple reason that BAA makes a decision, whether I think it's right or wrong is irrelevant, and I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to opine on all your decisions, it's not my place, it's not appropriate.
So, now Rachel's going to address some substantive issues raised in the rigged report later on. So, now I'm going to get back to another clip that where Ellen describes Todd's efforts to grow the grain list and describes it as aggressive. So, if you could play clip number nine, please.
To, his goal is to grow the grain list. That is his job. I am going to uncover every piece of equipment, parcel, land, personal property in this town, and I am going to tax it. You know, that was not how the philosophy of that office flowed for the 20 years previous to him coming here. So, it was like getting an electric shock treatment for a lot of people. They had never received communication like this. Daycares were being taxed on playground equipment, you know, everything. And he is correct, personal property audits.
Okay, so, he also tonight made some statements about that effective year bill is, has no effect on value. It's obviously confusing to people. This is in an email he wrote to Ellen Antalberg back on June 16th, 2022. I'm going to make all these exhibits, I'm just, you know, not showing them on the screen. I'm going to pass them over to Scott when we're done. So, I just want to show you where, in fact, that's incorrect. Lorrie Longy had put together a cost approach poster that we had that describes effective age and depreciation is involved in it. Effective age is an important component of the formula to arrive at depreciation, and it does affect property values. She sources this out of the fundamentals of real estate appraisal and gives the source for where it comes. And again, she's an appraiser, so she has more weight than Todd does. But you don't have to just believe Lori. Because we also had a couple of taped recordings of interviews with June Perry, remember from page one? She's the Vision, let's see, she's the Vision District Manager, and she's asked by Mario Capolo, "Does the EYB, effective year bill, affect the valuation of a property?" Her answer is yes. So, I want you to listen to this. It's going to be the question and going to be the answer, completely the opposite of what Todd has been saying. Mario Capolo then says, "Why?" And she goes into describing why, that's depreciation and so on. But anyway, she's the Vision District Manager that was interviewed, handpicked by Mario. So now, I'm going to ask to please play clip number 10.
Value of a property?
Yes.
Why?
Because it's the depreciation. So, again, once we create that table, it goes average, good, very good, excellent, rebuilt, and then vice versa, the other way, fair, poor, very poor. So, you have three types of depreciation. You have physical, you have functional, and you have economic depreciation. So, you know, that is one way that we change that depreciation is through the actual year bill in the EYB. So, when we put a condition on a property that says average or good, that is creating that EYB that you see written there or don't see. It's all, that EYB chart shows up in three different places, through the EYB, through the percent good, and through the depreciation code, which is the average, the good, the very good.
Well, just to work clear, I'm talking about effective year bill, not actual year bill. So, my question, so you answered, so I believe your response was that the effective, the determination of the effective year bill does have an effect on the value?
Yes.
Okay, and how do you derive the effective year bill?
So, again, it's a table, okay, based upon the actual age of the property.
Okay, so Vision says if effective year bill does affect value. That's our fountain of youth theory that we came up with. Then the second part of this is by James Williams. That's the one that Mario listed on page one as being the Vision Government Solutions Senior Appraiser, but he's not licensed or not certified in Connecticut. And yet, with this interview, he's called the Vision Project Manager, not an appraiser. So now, Mario's going to ask him about generally using the income approach to determine fair market value. And Jim's going to tell him, "No, the cost approach is normally what we use." Well, why is that? And then, I'm going to let you listen to it, because it's shocking to me, anyway. Most assessors want us to do it on the cost, so they can manipulate the value in the interim years. So, this is James Williams, clip number 11, in his own words.
Did you generally use the income approach as the primary approach to determine the fair market value?
No, the cost approach is normally the primarily method we use.
Why is that?
It is more consistent. Uh, it is more consistent, uh, at least for master appraisal purposes, uh, than to use income. It, it's more of an assessor's preference on how they want things done in the future. Uh, most assessors want things valued on cost so they are able to manipulate the value in the interim years.
Okay. Then I want to go back to, uh, Todd's, um, email that he sent back on June 16th to Ellen and Talberg and Wilcox, in which again, he says the field has no effect on value. That's obviously not true. And, but he says, we suppress it. So you can't find it on your street cards anymore. The first line that in this email says, I did suppress the EYB effective year bill on the cards after the street cards were printed for the BAA. So we give the street cards that gives us effective year bill as well as an audit trail to show if somebody's making a change these cards, you know, when, you know what they did and you figure out why. So Todd denied at that point that any, any, any of that existed. And some of you people that looked at your street cards and it wasn't there. So you're thinking we're lying. First line, I did suppress the EYB on the cards after they were printed for the BAA. So he's admitted suppressing the street cards. He then says though, about the value again, to get back to that. He really doesn't like putting it down because it's confusing to people. Quote, "It tends to lead to confusion to both the uninformed and the lay personnel." So we on the BAA came up with a resolution, passed it on to you with the council, suggesting that if the town of Enfield is paying for Vision and paying for all of these things on the computer and that evident, and that material is there, that data, it should be available to the taxpayers as well as to the town. And it should not be suppressed. The EYB shouldn't be suppressed. The audit trail shouldn't be suppressed. We told you that a while ago. The administration's sitting there and as of today, they still suppress it. Do you also think the people in Enfield are too stupid to understand it? I think if people want to see it, they should be able to see it. They're paying for it. These are just some of the tools that were used to artificially inflate this grand list, manipulating of the numbers. So anyway, now the next clip we're going to pay, play is Ellen describing a memo that, uh, actually, you know what? I should go back a second. These documents that I just showed you, by the way, are just talked about. They're in the haystack. They're not in the appendix in the report. Again, appendix, they want you to see it. Haystack, no. Hide it. So the next one is now Ellen, uh, talking to Todd, uh, Mario again about her memo that she gave Todd and tried to get him to pause with all of these changes that were going on. The Agriculture Commission suggested suspend and revoke the things that he had done and put the farmers back where they were to start with. Ellen's memo is to pause because it's too much to undergo in one year, but pause, but then do it for the next grand list. So you can screw half this, screw some of the taxpayers all the time, screw all of them some of the time, but please do not screw all of them all of the time. So what's then happened is, uh, well, I'm, I'm going to let you, you, you listen to this. Page, uh, this is clip 12, please.
Monday morning quarterback, that's always the case, you know, and I, having come in halfway through this process with just now managing as we went to appeals, I definitely would have suggested, um, that things be handled differently. We actually floated, um, delaying implementation at one point too. Uh, because of the, the shock value with some of this and to kind of work through some of the files. He was not, he did not accept that. He did not want to do that. Um, I do know that I believe I turned over to you, um, I'll leave here. Um, in February, I believe that I issued to him, um, a coaching and counseling letter in writing. Um, because I just needed to kind of put the brakes on some of the more, um, black and white application and customer service issues that we were experiencing. Um, and in that memo, I believe I did say, we should probably try to put the brakes on this and maybe not implement or do a phase in. And um, his professional opinion was he needed to finish it because it was too far along at that point in order to, um, to delay implementation of the new values.
Okay. Then to, to unpack that one, it's a three-page memo that, um, was so good that Mario banished that to the haystack also. So if you're looking for needles in a haystack, this one's over there too. This memo, uh, said, as I said, suspend the revocations till next grand list. Then she claims he exceeded his scope of his authority. He reclassified land without any, um, grounds as he's not a soil scientist. Highly, then they highly criticized the BAA report in May of 2022. But when I found this and I'm looking at, I'm saying, this is amazing. This is the same thing we talked about in May of 2022. She had already had all these things. She knew it in February and they're in her, this memo. The memo, by the way, is Bates numbers, Enfield, oh, oh, three, five, three, six, and three, seven. She then, uh, suggests to Todd, what you want to do is collaborate with the administrative team in coming up with your numbers for the assessor's office. So in order to value the assessments in Enfield, she wants to do it by committee with their collaboration between the Z, ZEO, the P and Z, the ZBA, Building Department, Police. Of course, she always has attorney Talberg in there also. And then they also tell Todd that the town attorney and town manager want to work together with him to create a media and communication strategy. So that's their own little propaganda thing going. So we're talking about fake news. And, um, and again, critical of the ag commission who wanted to revoke and restore. Instead, it's pause and then destroy the next, um, grand list. The next one, I gotta stop for one second here. Just I don't want to get into, to arguing about everything that Todd just said there. I'm, I'm responding to the report. But he did talk about equitable estoppel and he completely missed, missed the point. In our report, we talk about exceptions to the equitable estoppel doctrine. And that's why we, uh, went in with open spaces, grassmire, and so on, to prevent the town from getting sued for violating, uh, because we believe these were exceptions to the doctrine of equitable estoppel, clearly written in our report at, uh, Enfield, oh, one, two, nine of the Bates numbers. But anyway, the next one I want to talk about is this DMV letter that Todd told you was, you know, not, not really a lie. He just, you know, kind of, well, whatever he said. So, so with the DMV letter, I'm going to play a clip. This is from Ellen in her own words, where she describes what this DMV letter is. So, uh, with no further ado, this is number 13, please.
At a letter that he received, that he sent to Spazarini, which is again, another highly, um, thought of Enfield's company owned by Lori Longi's family. And the letter reads, "The State Motor Vehicle Department has notified our office that you have recently registered the below listed vehicle in the town of Enfield. We lack sufficient information to arrive at a fair and equitable assessment for the vehicle. Please complete this form and return it to the office within 10 days. If we do not receive the form back, then the assessment for this vehicle will be estimated based upon the information available to us. Please include a copy of the bill of sale with this form." Well, people lost their minds over this because first off, the DMV did not notify the town of Enfield. Some of these vehicles were older. Um, he obtained this list through the VIN code and this is the communication that he sent, which was completely inappropriate. And that's why I review all communications. So they.
DMV did not notify him. And in our report, we listed it saying that the tax assessor's methods that he used to obtain motor vehicle information for property owners was very disturbing. We said the same thing, that the, the state notice was a concoction of his. It never happened. And then after sending it to people that when they called up, he told them, if you did not comply and give us the information, that he was just going to jack up and take the highest values, uh, uh, that were available. So he was intimidating, bullying taxpayers then. And again, just don't trust me. We'll go back to Ellen's letter where Ellen talked about, um, the false and misleading, in my words, false and misleading, uh, letter he sent. She says that a company reported to her that you told them failure to report would result and you making the assessment of what the body type was and you would choose the higher value. So he makes up this phony letter, sends it out. People think they got to comply. They don't, but that's that. So what our report also was criticized for by Mario was it says, we used hyperbole. We reported what people under sworn, uh, under oath told us. So with regard to this, we got people that were telling us the tactic was deceitful. It was devious. One thought his identity had been stolen. Several opines alleged that the letters constituted mail fraud. We were just passing the information on. We're the messenger through which this is going. We didn't make it up. And then when you listen to, um, Ellen with this last clip, she talks about Lori's family complained. Lori's family consists of her husband, her kids, and her grandchildren. It was her brother and his corporation that sent the letter in. Lori has nothing to do with her brother's corporation. She doesn't own part of it. She's not, nothing to do with it at all. And on top of that, Spazarini has never been before the BAA before, nor has Kelly Fredette or, or a hundred so other people that until Todd came and then Ellen came, then all of this problem came with these people. We didn't create it. We were just sitting there trying to sift through it and do what was fair, right, just, and equitable. Also, at the same time, that our report is dovetailing with what Ellen has, she and Todd are referring to our report as a manifesto. The last part of what Ellen said too was that she thereafter, when this all happened in February, she was reviewing all correspondence to Todd, from Todd. So any letter went out of there, she saw it. She's reviewing it. Everything's under control. Perhaps then she can explain how it was that, uh, on, well, it was late June, I believe of this year, that the, um, town threw its assessor in, apparently with Ellen's consent and help. Acting in official capacity as a representative of the town of Enfield, an official letterhead filed a complaint with the Connecticut Association of Assessing Officers Ethics Committee against Lori Longi in an attempt to intimidate and silence her as a BAA member and an Enfield resident. The town has urged the CAA to revoke Ms. Longi's membership for her public statements before the council and at BAA meetings. By threatening Ms. Longi's professional reputation with false claims against which she was compelled to defend herself, the town continues to retaliate against her. They're obsessed with Lori Longi. And they, they continue to retaliate against her for the content of her speech critical of government and its officials. They seek to restrain her future speech as well as of a chilling effect on speech of other Enfield residents. That led to this notice of intention to sue that got filed on January 20, or July 25th, 2023, that I'm sure all the council is well aware of. It's been two months now. The 14th clip now we're going to play is about Ellen's comments after attending the ag committee's fermi extravaganza, where there were, let's say, 150 farmers there. She refers to it as a pitchforks and torches event. She issued a memo on it and that memo also goes in the haystack. She then tells about all these notes she took. We can't find those either in the appendix or the haystack. So we don't know what happened to those. But she does say that she, uh, turned them over to Mario. And this is the quote, the, the, the part where she disparages Owen Jarmak by saying he's extremely arrogant and entitled. So now please play 14.
We did that and, um, it really unfortunately at the end evolved into, you know, again, torches and pitchforks. Um, I attended, um, I took a, I took copious amounts of notes and the next day, my personal notes from that night were FOI'd by the Jarmak family, which I complied. But they had sat behind me during the, um, presentation in the auditorium of, of the former high school, which we call the Annex now. And Owen Jarmak, who is the younger generation, um, was making a, a series of comments, uh, that were designed for me to hear. Um, and you know, just, he's been a problem through this process. He is extremely, um, arrogant and entitled. And nobody within town government enjoys working with him. So that was just a interesting.
Okay. So he, he's extremely arrogant and entitled. And the BAA thinks he's entitled to be treated with dignity and respect, fairly the same as everyone else under the law. And, and that comment, uh, was an embarrassment. It's irrelevant as to property valuation and, uh, it was designed apparently to improperly influence Burke of Moses. So now Ellen then in the next clip relates Todd's false assertion that the BAA has created a hostile work environment. So you gotta listen to this one. This is 15.
In terms of the public.
Okay. So, um, is there anything else you would like to share with us at this time? That you think would be helpful?
Nope. But just to go back to my list of things, I'm going to go back and get you copies of the letters of extension for the grand list and the hearings. And any emails I have about FOI and minutes and agenda compliance concerning their postings. I'm going to look to see if when the complaint about the, um, uncomfortable workplace due to the BAA and the word hostile being used was documented with Steve Belinda. Um,
Okay. Again, another bogus claim by Todd Helms. There was also a follow-up email that, that was sent from Ellen to Mario, privileged confidential, Enfield number zero, nine, 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 six, uh, excuse me, zero, nine, nine, six. Again, that's in the haystack. But she's asking there, uh, for Todd to, to give now some proof as to this hostile work environment. Ask him to dig up the, the, the stuff from Belinda. And, uh, Todd's answer is, well, all the communications are verbal. I don't believe there were any written communications regarding this. Mario should have a brief talk with all the staff so that he understands the complete situation. He's got no proof. There's no, it's a bogus claim. And then the next thing, uh, on this is, by the way, they got to set up orientation for the BAA members before their hearings begin in the spring. They're obviously, we're, we're supposed to be brainwashed now in order, in order to rig the upcoming hearings. Ellen then in the next clip recites a homework list that she has, uh, to put together for, uh, Jarmak. And again, you'll find this obsession with Lori Longi. So this is number 16, please.
I'm going to look for any of the records concerning 78 Park Avenue within, um, the land use application permitting process as well as within the town clerk in terms of the transactions, sales, mortgages, financing. And I am going to get the record of the Jarmak Nutmeg Solar, the records and the tax stabilization agreement. I am going to get you a copy of the Farm Bureau. I am going to get you a copy of the Farm Bureau book that I used as a reference, and any communications that I had with Joan Nichols concerning those farm issues. And then, the last thing that I wrote down was a question on whether there was orientation with the BAA members, or whether we're planning on doing anything prior to March of 2023.
Yes.
Okay.
Matt, is there anything else that you have?
No, that was everything I'm.
Remember, this is the initial interview, how this thing all starts, yet it's all in the report. You're telling me this report wasn't rigged, not predetermined from the beginning? The next clip I'm going to play is, they're talking now about 78 Park Avenue. Lori Longi and her husband own a lot on 78 Park Avenue. And what's going on is that the town of Enfield perpetuated a title problem that where the marketability was not there for 78 Park Avenue. Lori and her husband didn't know it for five years, paid taxes on something they shouldn't have. When they found out what the problem was, they asked the town attorney to correct it or help correcting it. Town attorney neglected or, well, declined whether they know how to do it or don't, I don't know, they just didn't. So then, during my interview with Mario, he's asking me about 78 Park Avenue. So if you would, play 17, please.
Assume a month later, you knew that the deed was recorded. Let's assume you happened to know.
Yeah.
If you knew that, would you have made the same decision?
Yes, but I would have told the assessor, "You got a deed now, if this thing has all been resolved, so what you should do is go and issue them an interim tax bill, much like you do when you have a piece of property with a building permit. You got a building permit issue on a piece of property, well, it's taxed as, assessed as vacant property, vacant land, whatever. But then, once the CO was issued, then they issue an interim bill."
And I believe you're referring to the.
Okay, so now, with regard to this one, I'm going to submit a transcript from Todd's interview, one of Todd's interviews with Mario, there were four or five of them, where they talk about Lori Longi and this property. They must have spent 500 pages out of the 10,000 on 78 Park Avenue. So what I'm going to point to, though, is page 82 of the interview. This is from Todd's interview. He talks about the prominent property owners involved in these appeals. And they're going to sound familiar, because it's like a target hit list. Jarmak, Connecticut Mulch, Antonacci, and Longi. So now Todd's the second interviewer, remember? So now Mario's got his marching orders on that. Then they discuss the title issue, it's unsellable because of a title issue. So now Todd is asked by Mario, "Do you know anything about these quitclaim deeds to resolve the title issue?" And Todd says at page 84, "I'm not sure exactly what the issue was. I'm sure it was just an ownership. I'm not privy to that. I didn't do any research on it. Just ownership? They didn't own it." Then they talk about the assessment. So the assessment on the property had been reduced by the Board of Assessment Appeals to 28,000 based upon, the Longis had a contract with a buyer, subject to all kinds of approvals from P&amp;Z and ZBA and whatever, for $40,000. We accepted that as fair market value, 70%, 28,000. That was not acceptable to Todd, and so after the board had granted the appeal, he came back, not only put it back to the same it was, he jacked it up another $5,000 in retribution for them questioning him. I got to say one more thing, Lori Longi, on any of her brother's stuff, recused herself. And on 78 Park Avenue, recused herself, had nothing to do with this property at all when it came to the BAA. Never discussed it with us until afterwards. So now, the next thing I find is that I go to my interview with Mario, and he starts asking me about the Longis doing a correcting deed in April of '22, and therefore, that relates back to October 1st of '21 for the grand list, which is just ridiculous. So he then asks me about this deed, this is the first I've heard of it, and so he then says, he doesn't know if Longis did a correcting deed, he needs to check his file, and thereafter, you'll let us know if he did a correcting deed. But before I get it played, I have this, this is Enfield number 205. This is an email from the town clerk, Sheila Bailey, dated January 24, 2023, saying, it's privileged and confidential, so I don't want anybody to know about this one, that here's copies of the land records for 78 Park Avenue from 2019 to 2021. It includes all the recorded deeds, there were two deeds that were necessary. People named Brunk, who had the Longi description, Longi who had the Brunk description, a Caddick attorney, title insurance attorney representing Brunk, who had to prepare affidavits, prepare the whole, all these correcting deeds in order to straighten out this problem. So now, all of this, Mario knows on January 24, when he gets the email from Ellen about here's all the deeds. So I'm being interviewed on February 22. So now play clip 18, please.
Whether, if there was an issue like this, you know, how would it be resolved?
Yeah, it was generic. Well, I thought that the answer is correcting deeds from both sides, but I believe Brunk might have had an additional problem, because he, if he had a mortgage on his property, you can't just go out giving deeds to your property without getting private percent of the bank. So, and then you say, well, what's the bank got for its mortgage? I mean, its paperwork, does it have the right property or the wrong one? But I didn't go down any of that path. I just simply asked the title company, if you got a situation where you had the wrong property descriptions, can you just do correcting deeds? And the answer was yes. Correcting deeds back, which is, looks like what they did.
I don't know if they, if the Longis did a correcting deed with Brunk. I'd have to look to just check. Can we go off for one moment? I just want to look at my records.
For good reason.
Okay, so now, I'm going to give you the transcript of that, from the whole thing where it started. So it's only four pages, but it does, at the end, you have to listen to that again, and here's what, again, was said. "Mr. Coppola, I don't know if they, if the Longis did a correcting deed with Brunk. I'd have to look." Can we go off for one moment? "I just want to look at my records." And I say, "For good reason." Because now I'm suspicious that, how's this guy not know it? Is he too lazy to look at the land records? I'm not aware that he already knows, and he has copies of all this, when he's asking me the questions. And then, he's off for a while, checks with Matt, checks their records, comes back on, and goes straight into Jarmak, never, he failed to correct the misimpression I'm under that he doesn't know if Longi signed a deed or not. So that was so upsetting, I went back and checked with the town clerk, did a title search, talked to Despina Tarzinas, talked with Brunk's attorney, who I never knew up until this point. He then told me all the whole story about it. And so then, through Rachel, the BAA sent a letter to Mario dated May 16 of 2023, in which case, we pointed all this out to him, that he either knew or should have known about this before he ambushed me. And the other part of what we told him here was that there was a lot of rumors floating around from a councilman, Santinella, who had declared that Lori or I was corrupt because of 78 Park Avenue, the way we handled it, and also that she was involved in doing stuff for her brothers, completely false, bogus. So we sent this on to Mario, told, telling him in May, "We no longer have confidence in him and the independence of him or this report." So, and we asked him to respond to Santinella's, the allegation of Santinella's wrongdoing, as well as the ambush. He responded to Santinella's wrongdoing, saying, alleged wrongdoing, saying he never told Santinella anything about that at all, and he never said that either one of us was corrupt. He never responded, though, to 78 Park Avenue. Again, this, what you think is a pretty important document, that's in the haystack. My transcript in the haystack. Okay, so now, I want to get on to Jarmak. So we're going to play clip 19, which is Mario claiming he hasn't figured out the tax stabilization agreement yet. So go ahead, play that, please, 19.
That's the case.
And by the way, just to be clear on the record, I haven't reached my own conclusion as to whether it applies or not, because I think it's very confusing that you've got properties on Schedule A.
Yeah.
That if they didn't apply, why do you have them on the Schedule A? And why not put them on a Schedule B? So I haven't even figured it out. I have not.
Why is the tax assessor also saying solar, solar, solar? I mean, so, there was no question in his head it was solar, no question in ours. And also, remember, the year before, when those board members got this tax stabilization agreement from Della, it was said, "Hands off, you can't make any change on these things. This is it, you're stuck."
So let's talk about that. So the year before, is your understanding that the buyer assessor informed the BAA that?
I think you got asked Donna or Lori that, because I wasn't there.
Okay.
But that's where they got the tax stabilization agreement from, and that's what it was. Odd statement here that he told us.
Okay, so now, the next clip is Mario admitting that he finds that the tax stabilization agreement confusing. He's been working on this for months. We're a BAA, we take things before us, we have five or 10 minutes to hear things, we deliberate, we figure them out. But it's not up to us to correct a TSA that the town has, that they're not happy with the way we're interpreting it. They're not happy because they lost. But the year before, they had won, there were no complaints then. In 2021, well, there's an email I'm putting in here too. This is from Ellen to Mario, privileged confidential, and it's all from Helms also. Attorney Coppola wants this tax stabilization agreement. And then Ellen says, "Todd, didn't you reference the fact that they came before the BA, this is Jarmak, came before the BAA in 2021 when Unghire was chair? Unghire was never chair. Donna DuGanaski was chair, Unghire was a member. And then, the BAA voted three to nothing to not grant their appeal. Then one year later, when Tom Tyler's here, replacing Unghire, then, same, two members of the same, they vote three to nothing to sustain the appeal." So she doesn't understand what happened. I actually wrote on this, that either the town doesn't understand it, or they're intentionally misrepresenting its own agreement. Because in a nutshell, in December, in 2021, Jarmak comes before the BAA and says, "I want 490 status classification on land that's all subject to this 100% on solar." At that point.
Hey, Tom, you're at one hour, you got 15 minutes.
Thank you very much. So at that point, the, I lost my train of thought.
Unghire.
Solar.
Oh, yeah, okay. So anyways, we, because it's a tax stabilization agreement is given to them from Della, and they have to abide by that, Jarmak loses, because we have no control over it. The town's getting $320,000 a year on these properties, total. Whether there's something else in there or not, it's up to them to figure out, not us. The next year, Jarmak appeal, and there's a tax increase that's sought by the town, and our position was, hey, listen, it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. If this TSA applies, you can't decrease the taxes, how can you increase the taxes? And then also told Mario, "Why don't you guys talk with the town attorney if you want? Rewrite it, draft it, I mean, but that's not our job." So now we're going to play clip number 20.
When we knew it did apply from the preceding year.
And again, just so we're clear, I haven't finished my review of this and concluded one way or another, whether I think it applies or not. It is confusing at the very least. I wouldn't, I don't understand why, if these other three properties that were the subject of appeals, 307, 308, 309, that were filed on the 21 grand list, which you heard in 22, why they wouldn't have been on a separate schedule like a Schedule B, because I think it's confusing. I haven't even.
You could ask the town attorney that, that's more of a drafting problem for them and not making a recipe.
Again, I don't know. I haven't finished my work, I haven't finished my review of it. So just so you know where I stand on it, that's why I'm asking you. Part of it is, I'm trying to understand where I may have looked at this quickly, and I may be off. And I was kind of, to be frank with you, I was looking for maybe, for your insight as to something I may be missing.
The other thing is, I had given Mario earlier, under, you know, when he's asking what your background is, I have a commendation from the Department of Justice to Federal Bureau of Investigation for assisting them in what they called a flipping investigation from Shoreline Capital back about 20 years ago. It was a four-year investigation, and the letter to me from the special agent in charge thanks me for spending time on this, and for participating in a significant number of conference calls to educate case agents and the prosecutor after reviewing complicated loan files on the proper procedures concerning real estate transactions. I quickly pointed out misrepresentations made by the group, 13 people pled guilty. The head of it was a trial lawyer, or a real estate lawyer named Frank Toro, he went to prison. And in conjunction with this certificate of appreciation, which I got from the FBI. So I gave this to Mario, saying, "I don't really broadcast it." I said, "But I kind of know what I'm doing a little bit, where the Department of Justice and the FBI hires me to do this stuff." But I want to tell you this part too. One of the sentences in here says, "You took time out of your schedule assisting the government free of charge, because you believe that it's your civic duty to support the efforts of law enforcement. Tore words were never spoken." So I have this. This, by the way, where you think this is? It's in the haystack. He never mentioned in his report, and then he's telling me how confused he is. Well, I wasn't confused, and the BAA wasn't confused either. Our decisions were proper, we had the precedent established, and we did what we had to do. The next clip, which actually, I think I'm going to skip it, because I want to get to Rachel, but it's about the Moose Club. And I am going to include a letter from the Moose, I'm going to include my interview with the Moose, because there was 400 pages of evidence that the Moose Club went over with the town manager and the tax assessor that never was given to, well, was not given to the BAA. And as a result, the Moose almost lost its exemption. I have another letter from Lori Longi, the 284 pages of materials she gave to Mario that he refused or failed to investigate. And then finally, I have from the Alamo family, I, and I'm going to give you my transcript, as well as the file, where I pointed out to Mario that Todd had violated, in my opinion, 18 U.S. Code 1702, obstruction of justice with regard to taking mail blind to me, acting on it, and then not, not letting me know about it. That Alamo interview transcript is included, along with the file from that particular thing. And Mario, by the way, says, "He's got it, he understands, he'll look into it." I didn't see that in the report either. And you specifically asked him, gee, are there any crimes that might have been committed? I'm not saying the guy committed it. I'm just saying, we are probable cause to believe something happened here, and that's not in the report either. Haystack time. So at this stage, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel to talk about substance.
Good evening. My name's Rachel Baird. I'm an attorney, and I've been representing the Board of Assessment Appeals probably for a little over a year now. I first appeared in front of this town council, addressing what we believed was a conflict and concerns about the retention of the law firm of Birch and Moses in this case. I just wanted to follow up a little bit before I get started, and Tom, you may want to say, we have one last clip, you may want to say that in case I run a little short, okay?
Okay, yes, I just.
Okay, great. I wanted to follow up on the availability of the records and the, including the documents and the videos and the audio recordings. These are public records, and they should be available at the town clerk's office for the public to see. We have taken clips from certain interviews that were conducted during the investigation and played them tonight. However, the entire interviews are available for people to watch, because obviously, when you show clips, the next question is, well, what are they not showing? So. So I just want to make clear that anybody sitting here in this room, and any member of the public, can go and obtain these videos and watch them on their own. Also, there are approximately 10,000 documents at the town clerk's office, and those are in electronic format as well. So there's no need to sit at the clerk's office and read these, or pay whatever it is, 50 cents a page, whatever the charges on FOI. They're available electronically. So everything that Tom has referenced tonight, it's not that he got it because he's a member of the BAA, he got it because he's a member of the public. So going further into the issue of FOI, in the report at page 67, actually, starting on page 66, the report addresses the BAA's retention of BAA documents and FOI concerns. Now, I have been practicing before the Freedom of Information Commission for years, I have a legal investigator whom you all have met previously at another meeting named Ed Prude, and I believe he has been involved with the FOI since the law was passed in the 70s. And I am concerned about a recommendation in this report on page 68, that any future FOI noncompliance by the BAA be reported to the Secretary of OPM or the State Attorney General. Now, I looked that up, and actually, it's the state's attorney, which is the criminal aspect of government attorneys. The Attorney General's office does civil cases, and the state's attorney's office does criminal cases. So this report is saying, if there's Freedom of Information Act noncompliance, that the BAA should be reported basically to a criminal prosecutor or the OPM. I have made so many requests for public documents in my practice as an attorney, and been foiled so many times by government agencies. And you know the remedy for that? The remedy for that is, you file a complaint within 30 days with the Freedom of Information Commission, and you wait for a hearing to be scheduled, although recently, they changed the law where they have to complete their process within a year. But it used to be years, and you go through that process. I don't have the ability, and neither does anybody in this room have the ability, when they're requesting public documents, to report it as a criminal matter or to the OPM. It makes it seem, in this report, as if the BAA was doing something criminal. No, they were not. And the allegation that the BAA has made concerning the alteration of documents is most serious, because Mr. Helms did in fact file a complaint against Lori Longy for her treatment of various cases. He called it an ethical complaint. And in that complaint, he included the documents from those appeal cases. And part of the documents in those appeal, in those appeal cases, were land grids, residential grids, and these were documents that the BAA had used in its appeals. And when they were provided to the tax assessor, he wrote notes on them. The problem is, he didn't initial them, he didn't date them, he just put notes on them. So when he submits them to this agency that he complained to, it's called, it's not an agency, it's the CAO, that's been mentioned numerous times here, when he submits these complaints to the CAO, he doesn't tell them that he's the one that made the markings on the paper, and it looks like the Board of Assessment Appeals did. Well, what happens when cases are appealed to Superior Court, and you have markings made by the tax assessor on BAA documents, and it's not made clear that it wasn't the BAA that made those markings, that it was Todd Helms? There's been no allegation here that any documents were ever destroyed, there's been no allegation that the BAA has altered them in any way, and the excuse that this process of investigation was held up, and that the BAA members were interviewed late in the process, and by late, I mean February and March, it was their own fault, because they hadn't delivered the documents. You heard, you heard Attorney Coppola, and you heard the town manager, and you heard Todd Helms, and nobody in any of those interviews, when they're talking about timing and how they want to get this wrapped up, so Mr. Helms can just move on with things, not one of those people mentioned, well, you know, I'm hoping to get this wrapped up, but the BAA is not giving us those documents, so we can't go forward on it. Why? Because the BAA had provided those documents in the fall of 2022. So there's nothing that the BAA did to hold up the process of this report. They were concerned that they had not been contacted until February and March of 2023, after the town employees had had multiple interviews, had apparently had homework assignments to get the documentation that was needed for this report to issue. You know, there have been cases mentioned during this proceeding, and it's so dangerous to pull out court cases and put them on the screen and say, well, it stands for this proposition, because it's not that easy to interpret case law. And people tend to pull out of a case what they believe helps them. I believe that in this report, one of the most serious findings is the legal opinion, and it is a legal opinion, that the tax assessor's intrusions on the private property in this town were acceptable. The two cases that are used are completely inapplicable to the circumstances of this case. In one of the cases, it was, it was an appeal before the Superior Court, where the town had filed a motion, a notice of discovery, a request to inspect the property. The town was looking for a court order to inspect the property. We're not talking about just a tax assessor walking on the property, the town was seeking a court order. And even under those circumstances, the judge, Judge Clow, struggled with whether that would violate the Fourth Amendment. And he did an analysis, and he came to the conclusion that he could make such an order that the tax assessor could go on the property to be able to defend itself in the appeal that the taxpayer had brought. That's a completely different circumstance. And note, even in that case, the judge was concerned about the impact, the constitutional impact. Now, Basilicus versus Town of Bloomfield, this is a second case, the previous one I was talking about was Parnoff versus Stratford. But in Basilicus, the court again addressed whether the Fourth Amendment violates, whether the Fourth Amendment is violated when a tax assessor goes on private property. And in this case, the judge in fact found that open fields, agricultural land, perhaps it's not a Fourth Amendment violation, because, and remember, this is a Superior Court case, it's not an appellate court case, it's not a Supreme Court case, it stopped at the Superior Court. And I did the research on it, there's not one other case in Connecticut that cites this case for the proposition.
Rachel?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but the time is up for this presentation, we're at an hour and 15.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to the, to item five, it's discussion of cases. So I want to, as we get ready, because we've got to share two tables up here for presentation and response. In case anyone's hungry, there's some sandwiches outside the front door, feel free to help yourself. And I also want to reiterate that during the case study timeline, again, we all agreed that the BAA will make the case number one presentation, they'll have 10 minutes to present, and then the assessor will have five minutes to respond. I'll do the same type of letting you know when time is almost up at two minutes for case presentation, one minute for response. We're still in a meeting, folks, we haven't recessed, so we ask you to please refrain from talking. And we will alternate, BAA does the first, assessor will do the second. And there are six cases to present, so that's another hour and a half for this meeting. So Tom, or if it's Lori, that's going to take the first case, it's appeal number 41, Bay Street LLC 200 Fletcher Road.
Excuse me, Scott, should the assessor come up and sit at the other table?
Yes.
That'll save a lot of time of back and forth.
Yep, thank you, Ken.
Yeah, I timed it right.
Go ahead, Lori.
Okay. Appeal 41. John Santinello was upset the other night when he felt a citizen mischaracterized his garage. But how do you feel when the assessor totally mischaracterized all these farms and doubled and triples their values? I'm not sure if you realize that inflating values is equally as inappropriate as deflating the values. The simple fact is that we, the BAA, saw this artificially inflating of the Enfield residents' houses and farms in Enfield under this assessor and reported it to you as such. Every public meeting, I hold up this file of 284 pages of documents that I went over with Mario Coppola during my six-hour interview. And Bob, as the mayor, I did go to his house and went over this entire file, just so he was aware of the seriousness of the documents. Please look through your handout titled, "Cover Page Appeal 41." I went over 41 with Mario and explained to him that I am a licensed certified general appraiser in the state of Connecticut, and I do have the credentials and experience to appraise these types of properties. I gave him my resume, my qualifications, and a copy of the letter from the state of Connecticut as proof. I also told him of my 20 years of experience appraising these properties, that I kept a database of development right restricted sales, that in the 23-year period, the whole entire state of Connecticut, there were under 80 sales. The highest selling restricted sale was in the town of Torrington in 2015, and it was $20,000 per acre. But this was an equestrian center, having many farm buildings on it, such as a horse riding arena, horse stables, which is the reason for such a high value per acre. Appeal 41 is 73 acres of development right restricted land. The value went from $318,000 to $751,000. At $318,000 divided by the acres, it comes to $4,312 an acre. At $751,000, it comes to $10,184 an acre. The value more than doubled for no reason. The development rights were sold in 1983. The property was landlocked, with no access from a paved street. Pasture can certainly be woods, that's in PA 490 handbook, page five and six. It has a power line that runs through the middle of the property. Todd changed the classification of the land, which is not allowed. Todd gave the land an imputed lot value, meaning he gives the property a building lot value of $105,600. That actually can't even have a building lot on it, since it's totally restricted by deed from having a separate building lot. And it can only be farmed. Todd put where there was a change in use. It had remained the exact same wooded lot for over 10 years that I know of, and the applicant testified to. This was excessive value on an agricultural restricted farmland with an agricultural easement and a power line easement with no road frontage on a paved or dirt road. This was all given to Mario Coppola to review. The pages of the Connecticut Association of Assessors handbook were given to him as well, and the pages of the Connecticut Farm Bureau handbook. I had copied pages in the handbook and underlined the areas so you could read it for yourself. I don't think I could have made it any easier for him to look at it. The pages were attached for these appeals and the others that I had given him examples. I want to point out that there are four different print dates with the different information on each cards that were given to the BAA. We didn't ask for these print cards, they were given to us. On 7/23/21, $318,000, the audit was on. On 3/3/22, $751,300, now the property is more than doubles, the audit is on. That's 20 days later it went up that high. On 3/23/22, $751,300 with the audit on. And the next day, on 3/24/22, $318,000, audit off. And then poof, back up to $751,000, and the audit remains off. CAO handbook was the rule evaluation. Legal factors, which was regarding the easements. Ingress and egress and location. This certainly affects all land values. Uniformly, the same values for development restricted lands. The audit trail, who made these changes? Reclassification of PA 490 in the Connecticut Farm Bureau. I gave them a court case, which said that you can't disregard the developments sold from the Connecticut Farm Bureau book, and Todd is in complete control of the revaluation. I want to point out that under the codes of ethics for assessors, second to the last page of your handbook that I gave you tonight, the assessor's needs to make available all public records in their custody for public review. Removing the EYB and the audit trail is part of the public field card. This is public information and should not be withheld from the public. The MOU question, number 11, is it legally permissible to remove information on a field card such as EYB? Mario never looks into the CAO ethics, which says, make available all public records. That's it, end of story. This information needs to be back on the field cards. Lastly, where Mario's investigation, where was Mario's investigation on all this? There's nothing in the RIG report. Where was the farmer interviewed? Nope, not done. My information just disappeared from the entire investigation, poof, all gone. And as far as Todd, it's his job to know the property is a development right restricted farm and has a power line easement running through it. No road frontage and unable to build a house. These are some of the reasons the public has lost trust, and I want to know how we got these values.
Okay, I just have something else to add that I received from Attorney Landelino this afternoon, it's an email, I'm going to make it part of the record. He's the attorney for the owner, and he talked about the appeal that came to BAA last year on this property, and he said that he had informed us about the trespassing on the property by the assessor. And here's exactly what's in the email now. "In any event, my clients have reported that the assessor gained access to the property by entering through gates in summers. He was intercepted by farm employees before he reached the Enfield side of the property. The only way he could have entered the property was to go through two separate latched gates, which are located in summers. He either climbed over the fences or unlatched the two separate gates, we're not sure which. Not only are my clients concerned about uninvited guests wandering the property, they're also concerned that the assessor knowingly traveled out of town and used access points in summers as a means of attempting to enter the property in Enfield."
Two minutes, Tom. Two minutes left. Yep.
You got anything else you want to say on this?
No.
No, we're good.
I was trying to inform you at a stop, so are you good on this one? Okay, then Todd, response.
Do you need some?
Oh.
So this was 200 Fletcher we're talking about, right?
I only have the fields from 301.
So Todd, this is your response to 41?
Yes, it's 200 Fletcher Road.
All right, so there's not a lot of slides on this, I'm not even sure why it was brought up. I've also seen an email from Carl Landelino stating that they don't want to be dragged into this, they're not even sure why this is part of the appeal or part of this hearing. You know, it wasn't part of the report, so they're a little- You know, it wasn't part of the report, so they're a little confused. So the property we're talking about, it's this big, huge, long piece of property right here. I certainly didn't go over into Summers. It's a piece of woods. I drove to the edge, looked at it from the road. It's a, I mean, I don't walk every acre of woods out there to see what it is. I could view this from the GIS from my desk. There's no reason for me to hop fences, to go walking through woods to see what it was. So that's totally a lie of what was said. I never went to Summers to visit this property. Let me start the... All right, so my first sentence, I don't know why this was picked, but obviously I have my answer because they went first. So I went back to remember from my original presentation. This is one of those 14 properties that I reviewed that I decided wasn't doing anything with. It was staying, retaining in PA 490 status. It wasn't removed, never lost its exemption. There was only two reasons after reviewing this that I could think why they wanted to talk about this. Is that because the value on this one was a little bit differently done than 45 Charlie, which we're going to be talking about. This one was done properly. It's the way you set it up, the landlines. It's a little specific, but the way it's set up in the system on how it values things. But that's how it sets up the appraised value, not the assessed value. So the assessed value on this thing, on both of the properties, we're right. The appraised value on this one was also. The second one was, I did see that it went from pasture to woodland. If you look at the photo, it actually, you know, it's all woods. Maybe I shouldn't have changed it, but my concern was to reflect what the actual property was. I mean, it's not a pasture. Everybody thinks of a pasture as fields. You know, this is actually a wooded property. It didn't really change anything. There was a negligible change in value of $110 an acre. You know, that basically related to very little on the difference. Maybe I shouldn't have made that change. On the, what they're talking about as far as the suppression. Not all information in the assessor's office is public information. Some of it's behind the scenes. It's part of the vision software. It's protected. The effective year built, effective year and the effective area is not really public information. It is confusing. We've talked about this before. I don't know why they keep saying that the effective year, they keep talking effective year and then go to effective age. Those are two separate things. You know, in their explanation, they said effective age. They said depreciation. In the June Perry interview, she stated that the, you use the actual year, you put a condition on it, and that is what the EYB comes from. You don't take the EYB and put it into a formula. You take the actual year and the condition. So they keep trying to spin the facts of what everybody's saying. Even June Perry's, it's in my presentation. I didn't get to go over it specifically. But if you read it correctly, actual year, condition equals EYB, not the other way around.
It's also important to note that when you're looking at an effective year built, it helps you align your comparable sales. And you could have homes that are circled that have been completely redone, a gut remodel, and that effective year built is going to reflect that.
One minute.
The information that's contained within the assessor's database ultimately comes down to a paired analysis or some type of comparable sales. So it's relative in the sense that it aligns the database. Ultimately, the assessor is responsible for a value, and that's the basis for the tax.
Todd, are you all set?
I am.
Okay. All right, we go to case number two. It's appeal number 307 to 310 Jarmack Farms LLC, Broadbrook Road, Nutmeg Solar Tax Stabilization, presented by the Town Assessor.
This one's been discussed pretty much for quite a while here. So the tax agreement here is pretty clear. I believe you could ask Mario after we actually had a chance to review it, not just a quick cursory look at it. You know, the language is pretty clear. It includes six different properties, all owned by Nutmeg, and identified in Exhibit A as property, and remember property, it's in capitalized, subject to options to purchase. The tax agreement was for a stipulated tax amount of approximately $320,000 for a 20-year period. You know, nobody's arguing that. And it says that the town shall obey all property taxes in the absence of this agreement would be imposed against the property. Again, property is capitalized. So there's, it's important to note the definitions in the agreement of what property is actually, what property is referred to. So it is defined in the agreement as all real property that is owned by Nutmeg and identified in Exhibit A. I mean, that's pretty clear, I think. There's two charts in the agreement. The top one says, you know, owned or leased by Nutmeg, and the second one is the Jarmack properties. It only includes six properties. So this is clear, plain language that, you know, anybody should be able to read. What's more concerning to me... Where are you going? Is that with all that said, this is a tax agreement. The BAA does not have the authority to hear anything on taxes. They hear appeals on valuation, what the property is worth, not how much somebody is going to pay in taxes. It clearly exceeds their statutory authority to even hear this in an appeal. Should have never even brought it into the appeal. Even with the tax agreement, all of the properties, all six properties of, you know, that are paying $320,000, Nutmeg properties, those all have an assessment value. We don't zero out the value of the property. No property has a zero value. It's just, it's not feasible. It's only the tax that is directly affected by the tax agreement. And if Jarmack had an issue with the taxes, the amount of taxes they were paid, they had two options. They could go to the BAA, and they could appeal the appraised value of the properties. They could say, "My property is not worth this." It sounds like, and I didn't research the 2020 appeal, maybe they went that for the 490. But, you know, they didn't do that. For the second option, they'd have to appeal to you guys, to the town council. Say, "We want our own tax agreement. We, you know, give us a break like you did with Nutmeg." So at the risk of repeating myself, there's no agreement between Jarmack and the town for these properties. There is actually another property owned by a separate owner that is part of the solar project. They have solar panels on it. He has an assessment value on his property. He pays his taxes yearly. For Jarmack, these are income-producing properties. They're actually considered a commercial property because they're income-producing. One of the building, one of the properties actually has buildings located on it. So what the board actually did by zeroing out the value is zeroed out the value of those buildings. He uses those in his farm. I assume that he uses them for his farm. I mean, they're collecting money on this property that they're paying zero taxes for. So one of the issues that the BA made an error on that any appraiser or land attorney should know. The BAA states that one of the properties was merged by the zoning enforcement officer. Planning and zoning department cannot legally combine properties. It's not their purview. They can't come in and actually combine properties. Lori should know this. She was on the PZ commission. They can combine a property for zoning purposes. So say you have two buildings that are crossing over, or you need a little bit of extra land. They can certainly, for their purposes, combine a property in saying, "We're going to consider these two properties as a whole." But that does not legally merge these properties. Only an owner can actually, the assessor can't do this. Only an owner can say, "I want to merge properties." They have to go in, they have to file a new deed, and that, you know, Connecticut is a filing state. You actually have to file a deed before anything is changed. Anybody on the PCC should know this. So just to get into the dollar amounts on this, the tax agreement with the clear language. Only the property owner can combine the land. We just went over that. There's four properties of, you know, involved in this property, not three. 65 Broad, 69 Broadbrook, and two vacant properties. Those are the assessed values on the right side, over $1 million. The whole properties are worth over $2 million. The tax loss that the town has suffered from this and everybody else is paying for is $57,021, $62,022, a total of $120,000 that Jarmacks did not have to pay in taxes that everybody else in town did. It's all subsidized by the other residents.
All set?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to respond on behalf of the BAA. First of all, I wanted to let everybody know, I got an email today from Derek Donnelly. He's the attorney for Jarmack, and he sent a copy of his opinion, legal opinion, like 25 pages worth of stuff to all the council members, so I hope you all received that. I'm going to make that part of the record here because, as a BAA, we're not comfortable arguing against a tax assessor because it's really the applicant or the appellant and the assessor that have the dispute that they bring into the BAA. And the BAA listens, deliberates, and then decides. So with that being said, I have read over the, what Derek Donnelly put in his document. The only other documents I'm going to submit is back on March 21st of this year, I did send a letter to Todd because he had, after we had made our decisions last year, that he revised some of those decisions. So I sent him a letter, and I'm going to make that part of the record, that says that since you, we've received your letter and only had a brief conclusory statement as to your opinion. But if you want to give us an opportunity to more fully understand your conclusions, if you consulted with or relied upon any experts, such as an attorney, accountant, appraiser, or soil scientist, or if you considered or relied upon any documents, I request you provide me with a copy of that information so that we can evaluate it in terms of any of these properties that come back. And I specifically mentioned the solar properties, including carports and tax stabilization agreement of Jarmack. And that, I said, would help us in terms of evaluating relevant evidence, external operations, and being fair and equitably treating everybody, including the town. So with regard to that, he did send me a letter. I'm going to make that part of the record, too. He went through a bunch of different properties. I did highlight Jarmack solar properties. And he also said that in this particular tax stabilization agreement, he said he consulted with the author of the tax agreement, John Wilcox, and that Wilcox confirmed that Jarmack properties were excluded from the agreement. Well, we then asked John Wilcox under oath at one of our meetings whether he authored it. He denied authoring it, and he said he didn't even know who did it, but he thought it might have been Nutmeg that drafted it. And a lot of the statements and conclusions being made by Todd, with all due respect, he's not an appraiser, he's not a soil scientist, he's not a lawyer. I don't know if he's ever been on P&amp;Z, but I don't think he's an expert on that, too. So when he makes these broad statements, it'd be better if he had it backed up with, for instance, if the town attorney gave a legal opinion. That would be nice, that we could look at that. But you got a legal, sound legal opinion from Derek Donnelly that we had. We told you about the precedent from the preceding year, and we evaluated and deliberated and treated everybody fairly inequitably, including Jarmack. Whether you think he's extremely arrogant and entitled or not, the value of his property should not be determined upon whether somebody thinks he's pretty. Then that, on terms of one of these appeals where the assessor talked about 65 Broadbrook Road, and it's not merged and so on and so forth. We also have an email to Jarmack from Rick Reichley, the certified CEO, who actually says that he's asking him to correct his inaccurate narrative since it states from across the street from 65 Broadbrook Road, which, by the way, here's the key thing, doesn't exist anymore since it was merged with 69 Broadbrook Road.
One minute, Tom.
Thank you. So we have these documents before us. We didn't have the letter from Derek Donnelly, but he gave us a whole bunch of other stuff, probably 50 or 60 pages worth, that we went through. And when you look at that, plus the precedent, and the lots merged according to the town. So that's why we did what we did, and it's whether this so-called extra money is now being borne by the rest of the people in town. The extra money would be like somebody going in and robbing it from a bank. It's not our money. This property, all of these properties are, according to the town, and according to Todd, and according to Jarmack's lawyer, they're all part of the 100% solar tax stabilization agreement. And that's the way we treated it, and they treated it in '21. It's the way we treated it in '22. And it's the way we're going to treat it in '23 unless something gets changed.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move to case number three. It's appeal number 300. Jarmack Farms LLC, 45 Charlie Road, and presented by the BAA.
Appeal 300. 29 acres of development right restricted land. For people that do not know, the development rights have been sold off, and the only thing you can do is agriculture. This parcel is solely limited to farming. With that said, the value on this property has changed based upon the field cards that the BAA had been given in the appeals. The appraised value does make a difference. If the farmer dies or if the property falls out of PA 490, it is clearly something that Todd does not understand. 12/15/21, the parcel was $307,400. On 12/30/21, it went to $886,000. And on 3/24/22, the property jumped to $1,307,000. To illustrate to you, the last value that the parcel was shown on the field card is $45,000 per acre. Remember, in my last case, I explained the highest sold in my database in the entire state of Connecticut for 23 years was $20,000 an acre. With farm buildings, a riding arena, and horse stables, this property has no buildings. Even at the $886,000 per acre, the price is still $30,551 an acre, and that's still $10,000 higher than the highest sold in the state of Connecticut. This was an example of grossly excessive values. To make it very easy for Mario, our supposed independent investigator, I gave him all the areas of the Connecticut Assessor's handbook where the assessor did not follow his own guidelines. Under use value, legal factors, rule evaluation, uniformly, audit trail. Then I gave him the court case in the Connecticut Farm Bureau handbook on development rights sold. That they can't be ignored. If a farmer dies or if the property falls out of PA 490, they pay on these inflated values. The same watchtower rule that all properties must be assessed uniformly and at the same level of value failed miserably on this parcel. This is the same person that the town manager said was arrogant and extremely entitled, and that no staff on the town staff enjoyed working with him. It doesn't matter who you are or if you're liked or not. We, the BAA, have always treated each taxpayer fair, with respect, and have considered each case that was presented to us. If Mario was doing a real independent investigation, don't you think he would have looked into this one? In the report, he only talks about the reclassification, nothing on value. In your MOU, questions that you wanted answered, which, by the way, if you didn't notice, most of your questions were never answered. It seems as though you put out a scope for the tax assessment review, but it wasn't followed. And I would like to point out that the MOU was buried in Section 19 out of the 20 sections in the appendix. But Todd's updated resume was number one. In the MOU, question 18. Could any properties whose PA 490 exemptions were removed be considered to have been excessively taxed under Connecticut law? Well, in this appeal, hell yes. Remember, this was only one sampling of the farm issues that we saw. MOU question 22. Have you observed any violations of law or best practices other than... MOU question 22, have you observed any violations of law, or best practices, other than those already inquired about here? That certainly should have been a yes, for excessive value, and certainly investigated. Was the farmer interviewed? Nope. As an aside, on page 13 of the Connecticut Farm Bureau, take a look at about the application. It's in direct contract, conflicting information of what Todd told you tonight. So what is the basis, did the assessor have to value this property more than double any other restricted farm sale in the entire state of Connecticut? Where did these values come from?
Todd, your response, five minutes.
So this property, this property here consists of 28, basically 29 acres, it was originally classified under the forest PA 490, it was 100% woods. In 2021, Jarmak clear-cut approximately half of the property, and converted it to a tillable status. I noticed the change of classification upon my field review, when I went out there, and I actually, and I'm including this in the packets that I sent you, I notified Jarmak by email in December, stating that you're changing your classification, you need to update your application, or you risk actually losing this PA 490 status. I sent him an email, I actually even sent him the application, because he asked for it. He had to get it in by the end of the year, which he did, but that was through my office notifying him about that. So again, about 14 and a half acres of this property, he filed it as tillable C, I know the board hasn't brought this up, they're talking about the value, they're doing the rest, the rest of the property is swamp legends scrub. So upon review, and I'll show you the map here, so this third area here is 45 Charlie, this whole property, this is 19, this is the solar farms, these are all owned by Jarmak, this is 67 Fletcher, all owned by Jarmak. Every single one of these properties, owned by Jarmak, was classified as Class B. When this is, this is basically a new application, an updated application, and he came in with tillable C, it just didn't make sense to me, that everything around it, acres and acres and acres of property, were tillable B, or tillable C, tillable B, and he was classifying this one as tillable C, just didn't make sense. So I changed it to tillable B, to match all the other ones around it. Interesting to note is that lower property, 67 Fletcher Road, Jarmak actually filed tillable A on that property sometime around 2005, when he first did it. For some reason, in 2016, he went and changed it to tillable B. Again, with Joe Nichols, you know, land doesn't grow feet, and change classifications, apparently it does for the farmer. So development right restricted, the reason the value is where they were, and we didn't catch it. In 2017, the appraised value of this property, again, way before my time, was almost, you know, 1.35 million. In 2020, the value was 1.3 million. This is before I even stepped into the office. In 2021, the appraised value went down to 886. If you look on the right side, you can see the assessed values, the reason why it went from around 5,025, is because he did change the classification, he went from strictly 100% forest to tillable, half tillable, so that's going to raise the value. The reason we didn't catch it is because we run tons of reports, and Tom can talk about this if we have time, at the end of a revale, or at the end of a grand list year, we're running multitude of reports, we're trying to catch any mistakes that we can. One of the reports we run is, we compare an old to new, what we call an old to new. So we're looking at, so for 2021, I looked at what the property was assessed at in 2020, compared to what it's assessed at in 2021. You know, we noticed the difference, but it was explained, because it went from, you know, forest to tillable, that's the reason why we didn't correct this. Now, even Representative Dubitsky has stated, people don't look at the appraised value on PA 490 land, they're just compared about what they're paying for taxes, they care about the assessed value. So we did miss this, as far as the appraised value. There was a mistake made, I mean, it's just how it's put into the system, how it's valued in the system, it's a little technical, where the landlines are, and where you place them, and how many acres, and all that stuff. But why didn't Jarmak question this in 2017, 2020, I didn't go back to 2016, I mean, it's probably the same thing, it was all valued at 1.3 million back then, too. If this was actually ever to fall out of PA 490, it requires a closer review. I mean, we certainly would have caught the value at that point in time, you know, if there was ever going to be a conveyance tax put on this thing. It's interesting to note, to go back to what Lori said, and to tie this in with 200 Fletcher, she just stated that the highest value for that type of property is $20,000. She stated that we have it currently now at $10,000. So obviously, we're within that range of what even she's saying. You know, so going forward, since, you know, this error was pointed out, I did correct the appraised value on this property going forward for the 2023 list.
All set?
All set.
Okay. We will move to appeal case number four, which is appeal 352 David and Lori Longy, 78 Park Avenue. This is presented by...
Wait, we're going to have Despina.
Okay.
I just want you to read this, this is the record.
This is presented by the town assessor. Thank you.
I want to read it.
How are you? We've talked about it.
All right, don't go ahead.
This one's yours.
Yes. He's going first, anyway.
Oh, okay.
I thought the Spina was...
All right, 78 Park Ave, that's the property in the middle, the vacant property with the arrow on it. So history of the ownership of this property, because that's, you know, the issue is the ownership of a lot, who actually owns it. January 7th, 2003, Helena McGuire purchases this property with the same Schedule A. May 22 of 2014, the town of Enfield notices that the property is up for a tax sale. In 2016, Longy wins the bid to purchase the property. In the 26, November 26 of 2016, because it takes six months for everything to go through, the property officially transferred over to the Longys. You know, it's important to note that every single one of these transfers included the same Schedule A, the same description, so it wasn't the town's fault, they didn't put it in there, you know, all the way back to Helena McGuire, I see Ken snickering, but it was the same, the same schedule. So it went back years, way before the town had this problem, this property. And it's also important to note, and that in a tax sale, the buyer of the property, and this is always spelled out, the buyer of the property is responsible to research all aspects of that property. The title, whether it's buildable, if there's any issues, if there's any contamination, it's the buyer's responsibility, it's basically an as-is sale, the town is not responsible for doing this research for the buyer. So again, we do not own it, is their claim. Well, actually, yes you do. The issue's with the title, you know, so in September of 21, the Longys actually applied for a building permit for this property, they paid about $2,500 for this permit, and from what I read, it was with the intent that the builder was actually going to buy this property. That was the information that I could come up with. In March of 2022, and April 3rd of 22, the Longys fixed this problem with the deed, I've included the deeds in my handouts for you guys, one of the, I forget who signed when, maybe the Longys signed their quick claim deed on March 25th of 22, the other property owner signed their deed on April 3rd. Interesting notes, be careful, pay close attention to the dates, April 20th was the BAA hearing, so they fixed this deed problem before their hearing, they were fully aware of it. April 21st is when the deeds actually got filed, one day after they actually had the appeal. You know, you can draw your own conclusions to that. So the issues, you know, title issues are very common, there's a lot of realtors and people that deal with real estate in this room, they're very common, they pop up all the time, we get comments all the time in the office, you know, the land attorney screwed up, did a wrong ownership, the wrong name, a spelling, you know, whatever it might be, they pop up all the time, it doesn't mean you don't actually own that property. You know, just to put it a little bit simpler, you know, a lot of people have car title issues, doesn't mean you don't own that car, you just have to get the title fixed. The Longys exercised every property, every other property right that they have, you know, they could enter the property, they could sell the property, they actually had a buyer lined up for this property. You know, they were looking to build on the property, the only thing they didn't want to do was actually pay the taxes on this property, they wanted everybody else to pay their bill for them. They own the property, every document they ever filed with the town, all states them as the owner of the property. I mean, they filed for the permit, I've already mentioned, they paid a little over, I think, $2,500 for that permit. Is anybody going to spend $2,500 on a property they don't own? And this, you know, they had a buyer for the property, every property has a value, nothing has a zero value. Other issues of concern on this is, you know, the value placed on this property by the BAA. You know, if there wasn't a title issue, they're claiming it was 40,000. They said they had a buyer for 40,000, well, it was just mentioned that they paid $2,500 for the zoning variance, it wasn't a permit, it was a zoning variance, I believe. That's not a fair market sale, that's not a arms-length sale, if, you know, there's other concessions, the builder's paying 40,000, but the owner of the property's actually already, you know, paying for something else, so that's not a arms-length sale. Just switch, I'm going to switch properties a little bit here, just for, to give you an idea on the reference of the value.
We're supposed to be talking about...
Excuse me?
78 Park Avenue, not some other piece of property. So I object to this line of testimony.
Is it, Todd, is it...
It's relevant to the value of the property they're putting on it?
Okay. I'll allow it, go ahead.
So the Longys also own 100 Post Office Road, it's a single building lot, vacant, it is a little bit larger, there's no excess land, it's, you know, a single building lot. We originally, the town, put a value of $80,000 on this, they appealed to the BAA, the BA lowered it to $55,000. The Longys just sold this property on August 31st for $100,000. Let that sink in. You know, it appears to be beneficial for some Enfield residents who use the BAA process for their own benefit.
All set? Response by the BAA?
Yeah.
I think this is grossly unfair, he's mischaracterized so many things, pretending he's a lawyer, he's not a lawyer, the evidence that he's putting forth and the facts are completely debunked by the materials that I already talked about, that Mario talked about when he was interviewing me on 78 Park Avenue. The deeds to that property were handled by one lawyer, Caddick lawyer, it had nothing to do with the Longys. And for him to be making pronouncements about title issues and title problems, you have lawyers who can say that, his testimony on that is worthless. Anyways, I did get a letter now from Despina Tarcinas, who represented Lori Longy and David Longy on this property and straightening it out, but I'll tell you, I got a comment on, the one on Post Office Road, you have no idea about whether that value is based upon the piece of property as it existed on October 1st of 2022, or what it exists after somebody puts a foundation in, clears the lot, gets other approvals, has an easement to go through the property to then service the lot behind him, there's more there than just the piece of land. And these two parcels are so different, Post Office Road is much different than is the one on Park Avenue. Anyways, Despina's statement basically talks about that she doesn't think they should even be discussed in terms of these appeals that have gone on. Connecticut law provides aggrieved taxpayers and property owners a statutory scheme, under which municipal tax assessments may be appealed, and it's codified in the general statutes, that also, as far as, oh, the information with regard to the statutory assessment of property concerns a specific date and time, October 1st of each and every year. This is what I pointed out to Mario, when he was trying to ambush me to say, well gee, they did a deed to correct it on October 20, or April 20th of 2022, that's irrelevant, they might have signed a deed on October 2nd of 2021. The magic date is October 1st of 2021, no matter what happens after that. To get back to Despina's letter, this information about the marketability of the lot came to the Longys after they had signed a contract to sell 78 Park Avenue with Maiden Builders, sometime in April of 21. During due diligence, the proposed purchaser discovered the significant defect. Request was made to the town attorney's office, but unfortunately, those efforts were not fruitful. Thereafter, I, meaning Despina, contacted Caddick, and a claim was filed under the neighbor Bronx Title Policy. Caddick assigned outside counsel to handle proposed title search and next steps to correct the title, short of a quiet title action. Caddick's legal counsel drafted the correcting deeds and affidavits, and oversaw collecting the documents, ultimately recording the documents as a direction of Caddick. Documents recorded April 21st, notice was given to her office of the recordings about April 29th. Thereafter, assuming the Longys had clear and marketable title to proceed with the sale, the proposed purchaser continued to pursue permitting for the development. On or about April 23 of 23, buyer's counsel discovered an issue with the town of Enfield tax sale of 2016, and asserted the town failed to comply with statutory requirements of notice, under 12-157 and 12-167A, to the then-property owner. Caddick nor any other title company would insure the property, considering the town's failure to follow statutory requirements of notice and deficiencies in the recorded affidavit. I really need, I'm requesting an extra minute or two, because I had to address 100 Post Office Road, which I still think is an ambush, that should not have been before, to confuse the issue. Is that permissible?
Sure.
Thank you very much. So anyway, a formal request was, for the tax file, was submitted to Mark Cerato on May 23rd, 2023. He immediately forwarded the request to Assessor Helms, who informed me of his interpretation of the statute, noting market value has nothing to do with insurable title. I was not requesting an interpretation of the statute, I was requesting access to the tax sale file. Rather than engage in a tit-for-tat argument on statutory interpretation with the assessor, I renewed my records request. Late June 2023, I was informed via email that the file was available in the assessor's office, and to make an appointment to review it, when Assessor Helms was also to be there. On June 26th, I was able to access the file, obtain copies for the notices, paying $21.50 for 13 pages. The Longys ultimately sold the property in July 7th, 2023, for $40,000, as noted on the deed conveying title to Maiden Builders, Inc. In closing, I must note, Longys paid taxes on 78 Park Avenue without protest from the time they purchased the property in 2016 until the noted appeal, despite not having marketable title to property they purchased directly from the town. And actually, the $40,000 is exactly the number that the BAA had in its decision, saying if marketable title is restored, then they should be taxed, assessed at 70% of that, of the 40,000. They were not, he increased it, it actually got sold for $40,000, which the BAA was correct at that time. And also on marketability, I played a clip on marketability on the video, when Mario asked about marketability, and I said, well, once marketability is restored, let's take Todd's number, let's say it was restored on April 21st of 2022, he could issue an interim tax bill. Why they didn't want to bother doing that, I do know. Obsession with Lori Longy, discredit, defame, and destroy her reputation, that way, there's no appraiser that is criticizing this report, and this town, and this administration. Thank you very much, thank you for the extra minute.
Thank you, Tom, there's an extra minute and a half, just remember that.
Thank you very much.
The one thing I do is, you know, I appreciate everyone's patience here, and the temper has been great, and I want to keep it that way, so, but it's getting late, we've got two more cases to listen to, that's why I was a little flexible with Mr. Tyler. All right, the next one is case number five, it's appeal 221 Moose Club, and it's presented by the BAA.
The Moose Club had a tax exempt status for years. Todd removes them from the exemption, then they went in, met with the town manager and the assessor with 400 pages of documents, this is a pile of the documents. They testified at the hearing that Ellen indicated that they were all set, and they provided enough information to prove their tax exempt status. They filed an appeal, as an aside, waiting for the official paperwork. She kept all the documents, the day of the appeal, they came and asked if all their documents were there. We had nothing. I asked them to give their testimony, and that I would request the documents from the staff. They said that if they needed... The day of the appeal, they came and asked if all their documents were there. We had nothing. I asked them to give their testimony, and that I would request the documents from the staff. They said that if they needed, they would recopy all 400 documents, but it had been a time-consuming project, but they would do it again versus losing the appeal for not having the supporting documents. I had repeatedly asked for these documents. I was losing sleep over it. Why were these documents not given to the BAA? Where were they? Who was holding them? I would not let this go, because without this information, we could not grant the appeal. I told Vicki that they said they met with the town manager and the assessors in her office, and now they can't find them. I said, if you can't find them, I'll go ask Ellen myself. On one of the last days of the hearings, I was handed the documents, and I was told that I could not take them. I could not copy them. I had to look at them in the hearing room. I stopped appeals and proceeded to look through the entire stack, all 400 pages. I insisted on her copying the 990 tax form, to prove that I had seen it, and I had looked over all 400 pages. I did this during the hearings, and I could not participate in other hearings. The sticky note that Todd had on the appeal had been, "Does not qualify under state statute for exemption. Found other Moose Clubs taxed in other towns. Nonprofit 503(c) does not automatically qualified property for municipal exemption." Mario, in the report, makes a statement, "Lori Longi particularly is going above and beyond what is typically expected of a BAA in terms of compiling data and notes. He made it seem like we were not supposed to do our due diligence and go, oh, well, no 400 pages, I guess you're just not getting your appeal granted." I did have to look into this further. Since Todd was claiming that they did not qualify, I did pull the legislative research on the property exemptions on nonprofits. This was part of every hearing the BAA did with whatever Todd said and what the appellant said. We listened to the testimony and reviewed all the documents. I was so bothered by the withholding of these appellant documents, that after the hearings and the decisions were over, I wrote Deputy Mayor Sacala an email, asking her to read our report, telling her I lost sleep over the things we heard in the testimony. I told her I was concerned about the overinflated values. I went over the 400 pages that never made it to our hearing, and I was told I could only look at them. I told her that we should not be treating people like this. I said, at some point, you're going to have to decide if you will protect the town and the people in it, or protect the administration. I gave her all the BAA phone numbers, and I'm sorry to say that the taxpayers, to the taxpayers, that we're at the crossroads of doing what's right for the residents or not. Based on the testimony and the documents provided, the BAA ruled that this appeal fell into the state requirements of exempt. End of story. Nope. Todd reversed them a second year, along with 48 other taxpayers, and they had to do it all over again. For a second year, I had to request these documents again. Why are we having any issues with getting appellant's documents? They were meant for the BAA and for the appeals. Mario, even during the BAA interviews, is concerned about appellant's documents not getting to the BAA. But again, he never mentions anything in the report. Who had the documents, and why were they being held from the BAA? And we have a clip.
Or give us a copy. What she made Lori, so we took Lori off of hearings, put her on to read all of these 400 pages during that time, and then Lori summarized for us what it was, and you had to give those documents back, because for whatever reason, they didn't want the board to have them. So on the basis of-
Yes, I'll be right there, so we don't, so let me try. Matt, I want to know, we should, I want to know.
Lori will tell you the whole-
Okay, but I want to know, just, let's make a note. If there were 400, however many pages the Moose Lodge gave to the town, if they gave those documents to the town in support of their appeal, why was it not included with the appeal? Or if the assessor's office had it, why did the assessor's office not give a copy to the BAA? Why would the assessor's office let the BA review it and not have a copy?
And take it back, right afterward, review it.
I'm making a note for us.
It was a great thing, that's-
That doesn't make sense.
Lori is the one that reviewed it all, and would understand a lot of the tax stuff.
I think I could just, probably rather ask the assessor why, it doesn't make sense to me, so.
Yeah, that's true, but ask Lori to be the one to verify what I just told you. But what I saw was, she coming in with the documents, and then we had to take Lori up and ask her, go ahead and do that.
So the bottom line is, is that, based on the review of that doc, was it based on the review of that documentation that the BAA did?
And their testimony.
Okay, what was, what was their testimony?
I don't remember the whole thing, but I just remember that what they testified to was that they were tax-exempt, nonprofit, whatever, whatever the wording is. Again, Lori would know better, that whole thing.
That's it.
Todd, your response, five minutes?
Give me one second, I just grab a bottle of water.
Here's one. Okay.
All right, so, this is actually pretty short and sweet, it's a pretty easy one to understand, it's a black-and-white case, which doesn't happen too often in an assessor's office. State statute's pretty relatively clear, and it's been more definitively defined through court appeals and case law. So the Moose filed for an exemption under 1281-7 as a charitable organization. In 2009, there's been a lot of debate on this, there's been a lot of case law on charitable organizations. There was a Superior Court case, St. Joseph's Living Center versus the Town of Wyndham. This case has really become the benchmark in deciding whether a property should be exempt or not. The courts use it, assessors use it, just about everybody around uses this case to determine, make a determination. In the case, there's three elements on there, basically a tripod, if you can't stand up, you know, if one of those legs is kicked out, then, you know, you don't stand, you don't stand up on it. And, you know, they must meet all three of these qualifications. The first element is, you know, it must be organized exclusively for a charitable purpose. They read all the documents, how they're set up. You know, the Moose is a great organization, they do a lot of charitable things, altruistic. They may qualify for this one, the thing that trips them up is that all the proceeds that they get are to the benefit of the national organization. It's not going to the public, it's basically going to themselves. But let's just say, for argument's sake, they pass this one element. The second element is, is the organization self-supporting? You know, do they have to get state grants or money from somewhere else? So this element's pretty clear, if it's self-supported, they do not qualify. I mean, it says that right in the court case, they do not qualify if they're self-supporting. Upon review of all the documents that we looked, the Moose is self-supported. They don't rely on any grants, you know, from the state or the federal or anything like that. So this alone would disqualify them from the exemption, and the courts wouldn't even move on to the third leg, they would just say, well, you know, we don't need to, we're not going to waste our time on it, you don't qualify under this, under the statute. But I'll review it for you guys. The third element is, are you relieving a state or municipal burden? You know, you have to be doing something that's a benefit to the public, not just yourself. You know, if you weren't there, if the Moose Club wasn't there, would the state, would the Town of Enfield have to step up to do things that they're doing? You guys can answer that, you know, the question yourselves. I mean, the answer is no, the town wouldn't have to step up to do any of the events or charities that the Moose Club is doing. So the answer is no, they don't stand up on this leg either. So at a minimum, they don't qualify under two of the three legs of the tripod. But for further review, I just wanted to see how other municipalities classified this Moose. I did a quick research, Google search, and found out that there was 10 Moose Clubs in Enfield. One of them, I found out, was actually sold in 2015, so that left nine. Each municipality they had called, they asked them what their status was, every single one of them was taxable. Not one single one of those towns had an exemption for the Moose Club. For some further confirmation, I know this is a little bit small, but we looked up some other statutes, I had some help on this one, you know, what is a tax exemption? So this is about societies organized or licensed under these sections. It basically says, "They shall be exempt from state and municipal taxes, other than taxes on real estate and office." So they can be a 501(c)(3), they can be exempt from state income tax, or sales tax, or whatever. But specifically says, "They are not exempt on taxes on real estate or office furniture," which is basically the personal property. Some of the definitions in that is defined in-
One minute, Todd.
Basically, you know, what a society is, it defines what it is, and it defines what a lodge is, and I don't know if you want to comment on anything on this, Tom, or?
Yeah, so really quick, the Elks in Bristol, also considered a similar entity, is taxable. Knights of Columbus is taxable. You also have your Polish Club, or your Italian Club, things of that nature, all within the realm of doing charitable things, exempt from state and federal income taxes, things of that nature. But in regard to the real estate and personal property, we're governed by the statute, and specifically Chapter 700d, that make it taxable.
All right, time's up, thank you. Next case is Appeal number 363, Scott and Kimberly Delores, 336 George Washington Road, presented by the town assessor.
So this is a close-up of the property. Next slide will show you what it is a little bit more, but this is just the house. The building to the right, that's actually the garage that we're going to speak about. If you notice, it's literally nine square feet smaller than the house. But this property consists of about 16 acres of property, part of it was originally put under PA 490. It's an upper-end-style ranch house, a little over 2,500 square feet, that has the oversized garage, that's, you know, basically the same size, has an in-ground custom pool at 666 square feet. The town's original value on this property was just about $673,000. Just to give you an overlook, this is the property, where's my, you know, it goes all the way back, this is just about the end of the property. This is the farmland that they reclassified, that the board gave them back to them, you know, that there's the house and the pool and stuff and everything. So some back, some background information, Scott Delores, you know, they filed an appeal in 2021. This is a property that I reviewed during my PA 490 drive-around. So when I visited the property, the owner was there, we actually spent about an hour on the property, we talked about landscaping, because I used to be a landscaper. You know, he confirmed that he tried growing Christmas trees, he had a small area in the back that was cleared out, but that land was just too wet, that the trees weren't growing, so he couldn't, you know, proceed with that. So he did ask me, you know, is there any other way that I can get a lower assessment on this property? And at that time, you know, I said, you know, you're not farming anymore, I have to take you out of the PA 490, which he agreed, he understood, but that I didn't know of any other programs or anything to lower the value of the excess land for him. So one of the things we're going to talk about is, you know, what is it, the barn, poolhouse, garage? During the revaluation, Vision went out there, and they changed the structure from a barn to a poolhouse. It was originally put up as a barn. If you look at the photos, you know, it certainly doesn't look like a barn, the proximity to the pool and stuff and everything, has a huge front porch on the front of it and stuff and everything, certainly looks like it. I mean, I can understand why they would have put it in as a poolhouse without being able to get into the inside of it. Upon my review, I asked to go into the building, you know, I was denied, he didn't want me walking through the building, so I didn't change anything on it, I just left it as a poolhouse. So Scott appealed this property for the stated reason on his appeal, said, "My garage is a poolhouse." That's the only thing on the reasoning for his appeal. And he also stated that the property was worth $600,000. Again, the town's value was 672. The $600,000 was crossed off on the application, and to me, it appears that at the hearing, the chairman actually wrote in a value of 431,200,000. It appears to be, I mean, I could be wrong, it could be somebody else, it was a different pen, different color ink and stuff and everything, but it certainly looked like his writing. And again, the 431,200, that's a pretty specific number for anybody to come up with that's not an appraiser. You know, most people, when they come in for appeal, my house is worth 350, 325, they're not going to come up with the hundreds, you know, none of us are that exact on what we value this stuff, most of you guys know that, you know, 431, just 200 was kind of suspect. The BAA's final value was 442060, that's $130,000 reduction for an appeal that was based on whether a garage was a pool or a garage or a poolhouse. He did not state he was appealing the house and the values, so I don't know if he was talked into that, or what the situation was, maybe it was brought up. But the BAA ended up blowing the values on the house, the land, and the outbuildings. The house, they lowered by almost $100,000. They also granted PA 490 status when the owner himself said he wasn't farming anymore. I mean, it was very clear, the Christmas trees weren't there anymore, but they granted the 490 status anyways. In 2022, so upon making my changes for the grand list for the following year, I did change the poolhouse to the garage. I mean, according to the BAA appeal, the owner stated it was a garage, the BAA agreed, I mean, I changed it over to a garage. As it was, you know, a refusal to do any type of inspection, you know, I'd looked at the rest of the property information on the card, I did change the pool from unheated to heated, maybe I shouldn't have, in retrospect, again, going forward, we all learn from experience. The BAA has claimed that I've changed the square footage of the pool. You can look back over the years, the square footage has never changed on that pool, it's nothing I've ever changed, even though, you know, even though that they claimed that I did. I also, again, removed the PA 490 status because it wasn't being farmed. I was asked by the independent review to provide them with a summary of what happened, you know, I'll provide you with that summary of what it is, you guys probably already have it, but if you need it, I'd be certainly happily to provide it. So, you know, he appealed again to the BAA, who again, granted the PA 490 status in 2022, even though he's still not farming the property. During the appeal hearing, interestingly enough, Scott divulged that he had built a shed. From what I could tell on GIS, because I haven't been on the property, it's at least 400 square feet. It's not a small structure. You know, the building, the builder of the property was identified as Rick Cousineau, I believe is how it's pronounced. We were never informed of this, the BAA didn't tell us about it, you know, that there was a new shed on the property, the owner never came to us. We looked, we were kind of concerned that we missed something, maybe we missed the permit, we researched the, you know, the building department, no permits were ever taken out for this property, for the building of a shed. We were never known about this, except for the appeal, and, you know, Scott's actual telling the board, for whatever reason, that, you know, I have this new shed on the property. Also appears that there's, you know, the patio itself around the pool and stuff and everything's been expanded by quite a bit, but since we haven't been out to the property, I can't confirm what the square footages are or anything. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Response by the BAA, five minutes?
Yeah, and this is, I'm going to respond on it, but it's difficult, because I thought we were getting ready to do the 363 appeal, I didn't know we were getting it to the next year and all the rest of this stuff, so if I go over a minute or two, I appreciate some consideration there, just for that reason. First of all, the appellant is here tonight, he gave me a statement that he emailed to me that I can read and put into the record from his perspective. But Scott Delores is in the back, and I just want to ask him, I did show him the number on the appeal that Todd was referring to, that he claims is my handwriting, so now he's a handwriting expert in addition to everything else. And Scott Delores, if you don't mind, Scott?
Scott, come forward, because I want, I want him to be official for you.
Thank you very much.
Versus audience.
So this, this is your application that you submitted. This handwriting here, there's a number 600K crossed off, and then another number there with an initial, could you tell me who wrote that, if you know?
I wrote that. That's why I initialled it.
And you're 100% certain that's your handwriting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, thank you very much. Okay, so- Okay, so, thank you very much. Okay, so that's another red herring here. But anyway, we have our file copy from the BAA, from that hearing we did back in May 20th of 2022, on Delorge, and, or excuse me, May 5th. We then decided it on the 20th. And with regard to that particular decision that we made, we did find that, let me see, Mr. Delorge had said, his version of the, what happened is substantially different than that that Todd just said. My notes indicate, Scott Delorge showed up, he was sworn in, and he testified that there was unauthorized entry. It was posted that the guy boasted of his landscaping background, he was combative, and he said he was an appraiser. He also told him he cannot appeal this until after the mill rate is set. And that's, and then Scott said, "It's not a poolhouse, but a garage." And then he modified, now, this is my handwriting on, on the notes. He modified the fair market value to 431,200. But, but that was not, not me that did that. But anyway, to read from Scott's statement, he said that he met Todd back in spring of '22, that he had driven up while Scott Delorge was in his garage. They talked for a bit, and as the continuation, as, as the conversation continued, he said that Todd told him he's taking away his 490 status, because he was here a week ago, nobody was home. So he looked inside the garage, went around the property. He didn't see, he said he didn't see any, no trespassing signs posted. And so then Delorge asked him, "Well, is that standard practice? I mean, how do you have the right to go on a property once posted and so on?" And he said, "Well, I'm the new tax assessor, I do as I wish." And then he made a comment about, "There's a new sheriff in town." Then he started asking him questions where Todd thought it was accusatory. And he just said, "Listen," he said some questions about his business and other stuff, so he said, "That's, that's it for now. We're done talking." And then he went later to town offices to inquire about a garage. How can that be mistaken for a poolhouse? And Vision said that he missed his opportunity. He spoke with Alyssa Hanvey about it. She confirmed with Vicky that the garage would be about $35,000 cheaper than a poolhouse. So that's probably why it was made a poolhouse. So he appealed on that basis to start with. However, as he was talking with Alyssa, he brought up the 490, and Alyssa said he could appeal that also. Her information contradicted the tax assessor, so she clarified, "I was able to appeal that as well." While I was in the town building, the tax assessor saw me, impolitely asked me to adjust my mask, this is during COVID times, I guess. I asked him why, because nor he nor anybody else is even wearing a mask in there. He said, "My building, my rules," to which Scott replied, "Well, I thought it was the Enfield town building." Then later that night, he was informed that the tax assessor scolded Alyssa for helping him, and said that that's not her job to do that. He then went in front of the BAA, explained his case. We took the information he gave us, and the information we had from Todd, and then evaluated it, deliberated, and, and ruled in his favor, especially about the 490. Because just because somebody has a bad crop, doesn't mean you're out of 490. Lots of times, there's a whole bunch of flooding that just happened in Connecticut Valley. A lot of farmers were hurt. So does that mean they're out of 490 now, because they had a bad crop? And the 490 can, you can skip years if you're elderly, you're sick. There's a whole bunch of reasons why this happens, rather than just knocking everybody out of 490. Anyway, he then informed Mike Ludwig and Nick Hopkins of his issues, and they said that maybe you come and speak before the town council meeting. So then he was reluctant to do so, because he was not sure that's going to be well-taken. But anyway, he did decide to go. And he spoke to the town council. And then I, I was able to get a copy of an email that was sent from Todd Helms about 490 spreadsheets that he was giving to Mario. And there's another one of these that's in the haystack. But it says, with 360, 336 George Washington Road, that he used that as an example, and he said he removed the 490 designation. And then he says, "The owner also attended council meetings, and was apparent he had discussions with the BAA chairman, as I watched them from the public seating area, and heard the chairman thank him for coming." So when he came to see us this year, he talked about retribution by Todd against him for exercising his First Amendment right to speech at council meetings. Said he changed the pool size, added a heated pool, with no reasonable grounds whatsoever to, to add that it's heated, and then changed the garage again to a poolhouse or cabana, and removed 490, which we thought was vindictive. So this is what-
Tom, I've given you two extra minutes. Can you wrap up on this one?
I can wrap up in one more.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Nelson requested that Attorney Coppola do a memorandum. And the memorandum on the retribution was, just to put it simply, that Attorney Coppola, and he gave this to everybody, did find that it was improper for three or four things that, that Todd had done. I think the only thing that he thought Todd could do, which we disagree with, is remove the 490. But on the heated pool, and changing the, the garage back and all that, he thought that was improper. Anyway, that's, one last thing is, I'm going to also give you a copy of the letter that I sent to Todd, ask him for any experts or anything he has to back up what he says. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Thank you, BAA. Thank you, Todd. I've received a request, and I'm going to grant it, that Attorney Coppola would like two minutes. So Attorney Coppola, you got two minutes. You're frozen. Can we hear, can we see you?
Um, should you give me one moment here?
No, there you are.
Can you just give me one moment, just to get my screen back, back on full size? I've been jumping from the YouTube channel for this, so be able to see everything. Okay. Um, so for the record, Mario Coppola, offer in Birch and Moses, with offices in Milford and Westport, Connecticut. Unfortunately, I've been unexpectedly out sick for the past few days. Otherwise, I would have been here this evening. There's been a lot of comments made about my work, findings that I certainly disagree with, but I'm not going to take your time this evening to respond. It's certainly been a long night already. However, I feel compelled to, to very briefly respond to some defamatory, defamatory and wholly unfounded statements made tonight regarding my conduct, my work, and integrity, as well as that of my, my law firm. Attorney Tyler stated that the outcome of my report was predetermined, and he repeatedly described my work as being rigged. He repeatedly accused me of not being independent in my work, and he accused me of not, and he accused me of purposely obstructing records from the public by not choosing to include certain records in the appendix of documents that were included with my report, and further accused me of selecting documents because I was told to do so by town officials. What Attorney Tyler has neglected to tell you this evening is that since issuing my report, I've had numerous conversations with him about my work. He reached out to me a few times to discuss his concerns regarding my work. The first time, pulling me outside after the first council meeting, where I reported my findings to the council, to voice his displeasure with my work, maybe described as a brow-beating. And, and I met with him for a half-day in North Haven to try to discuss all of his concerns regarding my work, and I offered to further discuss any concerns that with him or his council, or fellow BAA members thereafter, and hadn't heard from him since we had that meeting. During those discussions, I specifically addressed all of Attorney Tyler's accusations regarding the independence of my report. I did so at length with him. I told him, in no uncertain terms, that my work was absolutely independent, and was never improperly influenced by any town official, any employee, or taxpayer. I went into great detail about my work. I answered an extensive number of his questions about how I did things, why I did things. Therefore, when Attorney Tyler comes this evening, and makes various defamatory statements regarding my work, after already knowing that I adamantly dispute any of those allegations that he has asserted against me this evening, it's very concerning to me. There is not a scintilla of evidence to support any of the allegations or defamatory statements that he's made against me or my firm this evening. I, I, I just want to put on the record that I would request that Attorney Tyler, at some point in the near future, file a public statement retracting those statements that he made this evening about me and my firm, that is, that are simply untrue, and, and without any merit whatsoever. Again, I just want to reiterate, we did the best job we could with this project. It was challenging. Throughout the process, we tried to truly work with everyone. And the decisions we made were made independently as to, you know, what, what issues we ultimately reported on, and, and how we did our work. And I'm proud of the work we did. And, and I stand by all the findings in our report. And if the council would like to ask me to come back at some future date, I'm more than happy to answer any and all questions that any of them may have. Thank you for taking the time this evening to hear me.
And may I respond-
Thank you, Mario.
With something like that?
No.
I think that's enough.
No, 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 thank you.
You gotta at least let me say something-
So, Tom, so, Tom, no.
After he attacks me like that?
Tom.
In public?
Tom.
I'm sorry.
I was very flexible with you throughout this entire process.
This is a personal attack at the end. He's not on the agenda, and you don't even let me respond?
No, I'm not going to let you respond, Tom.
Well, that's ridiculous. Scott, I'm disappointed in that. He's accused me of-
Tom.
He's dead wrong. We didn't know a lot of this till we found the haystack.
So, Tom, so, Tom, I think there was a lot of accusations thrown out tonight by all sides. So as a moderator, I am trying to be fair. You had an hour and a half, and you had three cases to present. I think Mr. Coppola deserved two minutes, which I gave him four. I gave you extra time when you requested it. Okay? So I think now-
Can I respond to you then?
Sure.
Okay, because the problem is, he's attacked me personally for four minutes, and you don't give me an opportunity to even say-
I think there's-
I deny it, or anything?
I think there's, there will be-
Thirty seconds, Warren.
There'll be plenty of opportunities, because this is just the beginning of this process. Okay. Well, no, 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 I mean-
This report should be thrown out.
Okay, so, any from the council, comments, questions, because you've got next steps. I have a closing statement, a quick one to give? Do you want to go right there?
Yeah.
Okay. So first of all, on behalf of the town, thank you for participating. Audience, thank you for following the guidelines. We appreciate it. And showing up to come to a public meeting and, and listen and learn is, is incredible. That's what should happen in local government. To the members of the BAA, your volunteers, I have the utmost respect for any volunteer, no matter what position that you have in town. This town runs because of volunteers. And to the council, you've had to sit there for four hours and not say a word, but you're truly leading the town. And again, you do this free, and it's a volunteer service. And our town staff, they're the people on the front line. They're doing the heavy lifting day-to-day, and they deserve the respect of the community, the respect of the council. So tonight, I think, was a good meeting. Next, the town council meets on October 2. They will be taking the information that they had here, and they will go back and put forward some recommendations that they would like to see moving forward. Thank you for participating. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to moderate. I hope I was fair. Not everyone might agree. But again, the utmost respect to everyone involved in the process. With that, Mr. Mayor, there is a motion to adjourn?
There is a motion, Councilor Rangini.
Councilor Rangini, and a second by Councilor Nelson. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.